All right, we'll call meeting to order of the planning board for July thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start by welcoming Chris Plex, our newest member. Pointed last week sworn in all ready for duty. Welcome, Chris. Start with a roll call to see who's here, alphabetical Clark.
Our Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here. Kevin.
Kevin Hein here.
And Chris, you're Chris, you're here.
Black here.
Okay. All right, I hope our other two members are going to join us. There's somebody got a question and Q and A. Well, that's me. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was eating my dinner. Sorry. Deirdre is here, so we now have five people. All right, we'll start with. I'll just announce that if anybody's here for the cohesive work project, that is going to be continued to July twenty-seven at six thirty at the request of the applicant. So we will not be hearing that tonight. Can I have a motion to make that continuance official?
So move.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, roll call, Clark.
Our Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I. Kevin. Kevin, you're muted, but that's okay. I saw you say yes.
Hi.
Deirdre.
Hi.
And Chris.
Hi.
Okay. All right, our next item of business is for ninety Howard Gleason Road. We had closed the hearing on this, correct? And we are just here to do our decision tonight. Due to membership issue. Yes, I'm sorry, Lauren.
Perhaps I misrecalling, but I thought that you continued the hearing. I don't.
All right, that's, that's, that's fine. Oh, let me, before we start that, Lauren, I forgot, I was remiss. And then Lauren Lind is here and Angela Giso and our town council Carolyn Murray's well. Welcome. And Lauren, if you could tell everybody, the public how they could participate.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. For members of the public wishing to participate at each application, there's a designated public comment period. We ask that you signify that you'd like to address the board in the Q and A at the bottom of the screen. Write your name and address, and you can either leave written comments or just leave your name and address, and we'll promote you to use your microphone and camera at that time. Thank you. I'll turn it back to the chair.
All right, sorry. All right. So in continuation of ninety hour Gleason Road. We use record, yeah, Clark, if you.
Yeah, I just, just for the benefit of the board, I did. Review the Zoom meeting and the draft meeting minutes. According to the Mullen rule in order to be eligible to vote.
I was just going to make that announcement that you and Kevin had done that. So. That was the reason we had to continue to tonight, and we are ready to go with our decision. I. So we will have everyone but Chris who is able to participate for the vote. Lauren, I understand we have a draft decision to look at. If you could pull that up, I'd appreciate it. I understand.
I just have.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, one note for the benefit of the board and the applicant I had previously distributed, but we have now a version that has edits from council, so I'm going to use that version for the live edit today.
All right, do you want to pull it up? All right, great. So the beginning of it has a lot of the standard boilerplate language we use for a special permit decision. The key parts I'd like to get to is down to the findings and the conditions. If there is something that. Okay, so Carol, in your comment that I was. The, the draft finding is to basically find that we're not, the special permit standard, as I understand it, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. That's what I was trying to get at, but. If there's some alternative you suggest of mall ears.
I think, and I can't entirely read that off the screen, but I think what I suggested was. That we look at the language that is in the purpose and intent, like Article eleven doesn't have any specific special permit criteria for itself. It just refers back to twelve dash four, but when you look at that. You know, the criteria under twelve dash four isn't really applicable to this project. So my suggestion was if we look at. Article eleven and the purpose and intent, it talks about promoting land development and site planning practices. That are responsive to the character of cohesive photography. That without preventing the reasonable development of land. So I think I put that language in. I can enlarge that just a little bit. In my comment, then if we want to go through the criteria of twelve dash four and special permits. I, I guess we could go through and talk about. Egress and ingress or that the proposed use isn't going to create any danger pollution or. Anything to that effect, but I don't really see that signs or refuse collection. Or economic effect. Really applicable here, but you could certainly go through the criteria if you choose to.
And then my thought is we didn't need that with this because it was very, you know, the, the special permit is very limited in scope to the ledge removals, so. And I'll leave that to the discretion of the board, but I didn't, I don't know that we need to recite all of that from twelve point four. I'm, I'm fine with substituting the language and the findings that Carolyn has suggested.
They do.
Okay. Applicant, Kevin, I'm sorry.
I'd perhaps suggest that we simply replace neighborhood with environs.
Okay, well, I believe neighborhood is the legal word that the courts and everybody uses, but that's all right.
Okay.
I, I think.
It is a term of art.
Yeah, I, I think. That may somewhat disappear if we're incorporating Carolyn's language, so. Applicant have any comment on making a change to that finding?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. All right.
Just sure I got it right, Tom. The, the applicant's going to expose more ledge and then bury some other ledge, so they're not actually removing ledge there. There, it's an alteration because the. The bylaw language says alteration or removal, so this would, this would fall under the alteration category. The ledge is still going to be there.
Correct. And then when the condition that's following is, is. Is citing the fact that they're going to be doing this, we just need to put it in the numbers. Of the square feet and date of the plans, but. It's basically incorporating, this condition is incorporating what they proposed. And. Covering some and exposing others, exposing more, so. Overall, that, that leads to the finding that this isn't running afoul of the bylaws intent, so. Looking at those three conditions, again, this is fairly simple, given the. Scope of the project from our board's perspective. Anybody have any issues with that? Or I don't know, applicant, do you want a quick? Quick plug in the numbers and condition number two for us? I can't, I couldn't remember what I was drafting as what the numbers were. I think it was a hundred something square feet is being. Covered in. Two hundred something.
It's a hundred and ten square feet is being exposed and two hundred and twenty is going to be, I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty will be exposed. In exchange for the hundred and ten that were being covered. So we had two twenty and one ten.
Yeah, and then Lauren just put in the dates that the final plans that reflect that. That was. All right, does anybody on the board have any comments about those conditions or suggestions for any further conditions?
I just had a question as to what mechanism or means are going to be used to expose the ledge? Would there be excavation to daylight more of the ledge that's currently underground? Or are we just talking about clearing brush from an area that's has a thin till on top of it? I just, I was looking for a little additional explanation of that, if that could be provided by the applicant or the representative.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So the, the area in, in the rear of the dwelling, the grade is coming down in some of the areas. So up against with the ledges, and we had some retaining walls in those areas. So we're either going to shorten the retaining walls, but yes, we'll be excavating down to expose additional ledge.
Okay, I appreciate the additional explanation.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody from the board have any other comments?
No comment.
Anybody from the public out there? Lauren, I don't know if anybody's out there.
There's nothing in the Q and A at this time.
Another type of motion to close the hearing and to. Project subject to findings and conditions as amended in the draft that is before us.
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the. Decision as drafted and amended.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, we'll call Clark.
Our Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I. Kevin.
Kevin Hein, I.
And Deirdre.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Okay, right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Chris vote.
No, he wasn't at the hearing, so.
All right, right, right.
We, we have enough, yeah, we have enough to vote with the four of us, so. All right, Mr. Pappitch, Mr. Sullivan, thank you. Thank your client.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We're one of the first permits under that bylaw, so I appreciate the creative solution.
Yes, we're all very excited.
Looking forward to the next one. You will be our guide to the future, so appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Moving along. Our next. Our next matter is going to be fifty-five South Main Street. This is both a site plan review and a village district special permit. This is a new hearing, so Lauren, if you wouldn't mind reading the public hearing notice. But you're muted, you're muted.
Do we have to continue the hearing for fifty forty-six border street?
Did we, we did. We did a quick vote on that.
I think my team was ready, going to be ready at seven guys. Based on the agenda, let me just make sure that they're all on.
So I just need a moment to do two screens here. I'm getting the public hearing notice.
We've got a couple of other things cast, so I'm not going to try to keep it as brief as possible.
Okay.
I think.
I do see some of your team members now that I'm back in the Zoom screen, Cassie, I will bring up them now.
Okay, thanks.
We lost Amy, though, huh?
She's back here. I will bring her up as well.
Okay.
I see Tolukeyan, Tolukeyan, you'll just have to accept it, an invite to rejoin the webinar as a panelist.
Let the minute reflect, minutes reflected Amy, classmate is here as well. Welcome, Amy.
All right, I'm going to take a moment to read the public hearing notice. Notice of public hearing class of planning board pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash twelve point four, Section three hundred dash twelve point six, and Section three hundred dash eighteen. For the class zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing via Zoom webinar ID eight two six four zero two zero four five three five. Password two oh two nine eight eight on Wednesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty PM on the application of Cassie Malatesta and the South Main Coast Adventure LLC. For Harbor Village Business, that's incorrect. It's a Village Business District Special Permit and Site Plan Review Approval. The subject properties are shown on Class of Assessors map E fifteen eighteen zero zero three, otherwise known as fifty-five South Main Street. The application is for the raise and removal of the existing two thousand one hundred and twenty-five square foot single story structure to allow for a construction of a new three story mixed use structure. Having footprint of ten thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven square feet of activated commercial retail space on the first floor, as well as the second and third floor above with twelve residential apartments. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Class of Town Hall forty-one Highland Avenue. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by contacting Planning and Zoning Director Lauren Lind via email at L Lind at class at MA dot org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should attend the virtual meeting at the time designated. Sign Thomas Callahan Chair, Class of Planning Board.
Okay, all right, so. We'll get right into it. And again, because of our time constraints tonight, if you could be as brief as possible, because we want to get through, have a good first go through this.
Right, Cassie, I just want to make sure John is on.
Who's, who's presenting for you?
Ted needs access to this, Tulukey needs access to the screen, but John Dennehy is also helping run point on the meeting tonight. So is John Dennehy on?
I don't see a John Dennehy. And.
We all thought the meeting was starting at seven, guys.
And all of our agenda times are approximate. That's why they, we advertise them for six thirty.
Seven is a guideline. Well, in the, in the meantime. Let me conduct another quick piece of business. Has everybody seen the minutes of June sixteen? Members?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, edits to those minutes?
I do not.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June sixteen?
A motion to approve the minutes of June sixteen to the planning board for Cohasset.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Clark.
Our Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I, Amy. Muted, Amy. I saw you, I saw you said yes, Kevin.
Hi.
Deirdre.
Hi.
Chris, you can vote on this one if you'd like.
Chris Plex, I.
Thank you. Well, we got that out of the way. All right. Any, as long as we're. Waiting any other business, Lauren, that we need to attend to administratively that we can do quickly?
No further business that I can think of. I do now see in the audience John Dennehy and Ted Tolukeyan, so they'll just need to accept the panelist invite.
And just, just for everybody's benefit, I mean, we, we do schedule everything for six thirty, and the times when we put times when we have multiple hearings is sort of approximate. And we had a cancellation tonight, so that kind of messed up that timeframe, so. John, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members.
So. Who's going to be the lead speaker?
Actually, it's going to be me, sir. Yes, good evening, I think is, is Ted here? He is. All right, well, good evening, folks. As you know, we are here on behalf of South Main Street Cohasset Venture LLC. They have filed for an application for the special permit review and our special site plan review and special permit pursuant to your bylaws. And we are here seeking a special permit that relates to a side setback in the Village Business District. As you may remember or recall for your board members, we last were before you, just with some ideas. Back in September of two thousand and twenty-one, since then, we spent the last eleven months reviewing the site, reviewing what our proposal was back then. To try to come to some kind of idea of what was going to be in the best interest for the town. We actually addressed with various town officials between the planner and the building inspector and other people to kind of get an idea. Of what our proposal was to remind you, the last time we were here, there was a proposal for about twenty units. At the site, as everybody knows, the site is the gas station that's on fifty-five South Main Street. And we were actually looking to incorporate within that project. A, a, a self park, I guess you could say parking garage. And so we explored that over and over again, and we realized that after going through that process, that the parking garage was, in essence, going to be cost prohibitive. It kind of drove the project, and it was a much larger project that we were proposing at that time and getting your feedback. And then we realized that, you know, at this point. It, it really wasn't the best, so we began to relook at our proposal and looking at various things. And I think you folks will see from our submission that it's been drastically reduced in size and scope. So I've got some professionals here who are going to present their, like, shall we say, review of the project. But before we do, I just wanted to hit the legal aspects of why we're here with respect to the special permit. When you review your materials and you look at the site plan in particular, there is a side setback. And the side setback that we're talking about happens to be from the side of the building with the medical building on James Way. Dr. Pompeo's office. The side setbacks are supposed to be ten feet. And in this case, I believe on the plans, it said that in the margin, it says it's about five point six feet. I think the plans actually render it being a five point seven feet. I'll clarify that with the engineer, but in essence, that's how far back from a side setback that we're looking at. And it's for that purpose that we're seeking the special permit from your board. The authority for you folks, obviously, to take a look at this. With respect to a special permit is granted pursuant to Article eighteen of your bylaws. Where a special permit granting authority happens to be given to you folks within that district. And is that, that is the reason why we are here before you with that aspect to ask for a reduction from the ten foot side back. Set setback rather to a five point six or five point seven setback.
May I, may I just interrupt you for a minute and Carol, yeah, help me out here, but. I know, as I understand our village bylaws, the special permits regarding the uses. I still believe that a dimensional variation would require a variance from the zoning board. I'll defer to our town council.
Agree with that. No, I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I was just looking at. Article eighteen again, and I see nothing in there that gives the planning board any kind of authority. To grant a dimensional. A dimensional relief like a side yard setback, so I think that would still be a variance.
Well, I'd like to talk with the Carol.
John, John, and I'm referring to eighteen point one subsection A, so, so eighteen point one A one, where it specifically says that. You know, we can't give, we're not entitled applicants to release from the dimensional requirements unless it's otherwise separately granted by variance, so.
Tom, excuse me. If you, if you look at the. The table of area regulations under three hundred attachment two. It spells out. For District VB, the, the front setback is fifteen feet with an asterisk, and the side setback is ten feet with an asterisk. The asterisk then refers you to.
But no, one and three.
Note. Note one and three.
And fifteen.
And, and fifteen, fifteen is the operable one. It says for structures of the VB district required front and rear shall meet the minimum yard requirements. In the table, unless a reduced front yard and or rear yard is specifically authorized by grant. Of a special permit by the special permit granting authority upon a finding that such reduced front or rear set. Rear yard is consistent with the necessary findings for issuance of a special permit set forth under three hundred dash twelve point four A subsection two of this bylaw. It, it would seem like we, we would be the spur, special permit granting authority in this case, the planning board. But it doesn't identify side setback. That's just for rear.
Footnote one, Clark.
What's that?
Footnote one does.
All right, let me, let me, let me say that, I mean. Most positive, we're not finishing this whole project tonight, so. Let's just set that aside for the moment. There's obviously conflict, there's conflicting language in the bylaw, so let, let, let Carolyn and, and the board work that out.
Yeah.
So I don't want to get to, to detract you from your presentation.
Sure, no, I appreciate that. I was actually anticipating that. So I could address the board quickly. Since it's been raised, I will, and I'd like to talk to Carolyn, because Mr. Brewer is actually correct. And that is that you start off with Article eighteen, and although you're talking about A, you have to look at part C that says that you are the special permit granting authority. From that point, then you go to three hundred. One point eight point one C. And Mr. Brewer was actually raising that, the table of uses, when you go through the table of uses, because this is a very convoluted way of getting to where we're at. It says under there, you know, dwellings for more than one family, including those of combos with stores, which is what this project is. And then it says the table of area regulations, which Mr. Brewer was pointing out, you get to the football, but you have to look at the asterisks, then you get to the footnote, footnote, well, footnote one. And then that brings you back to Section three hundred. Twelve point four A two, which is you folks going through the requirement in order to reduce that side setback. So I'm happy to brief that, but I just want to make sure we're clear, because I know, Mr. Chairman, you'd raised that before. And, you know, I, I think it's, it's, it's quick for town council to quickly opine tonight. That's the case without actually going through it thoroughly. But having said that, as I said.
Yeah, I don't think we'll need briefing on it. Just let, let's get. Let's just put, you know, we, the arguments are noted. Let's just move on with your presentation if we could.
Sure, sure. So just so you understand, folks, aside from that side foot, setback, we could actually move it. The proper ten feet, and then we're just looking at site plan review. But I think I'd like to know that from my client from town council, because if that's the case, that's going to change the whole project, and then we'll just come in with site plan review. Having said that, though, as I said to you before, this project has been, you know, we've looked at it extensively. And I think, you know, it's fair to say that we've looked at trying to diversify some of the housing. Within the proposal, there are two units that are going to be one bedroom. Those are about eight hundred and thirty, between eight hundred and twenty-six and eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. We're also looking at. A number of three bedrooms, which are frankly, two of them for three bedrooms. Again, that's going to be around thirteen hundred square feet for those, and then the remaining, which are eight, two bedroom units, about. Anyway, between eleven hundred and about fourteen hundred. In essence, those are going to be twelve units that are going to be placed there. We're also looking at about thirty-three hundred square feet for commercial retail off of, off of both. South Main Street and utilized with respect to James. Way. There's obviously, you're going to hear about public access townway. We're actually going to improve. We're going to try to open that up to have, be more inclusive. Onto our own site and try to beautify it to, to create some linkage between the back parking lot as well as to South Main Street. Project also identifies that we're going to be adding a, at least a form of pedestrian walkway from the southern portion on James Way. To go from South Main Street back to the parking lot. That's going to make it safer for people. But I think is also unique is that we're also going to have the ability to go in between. That's going to have another access going from the way to townway, the two ways. So having looked at that aspect, I think the other thing that bears importance to, to review is that. A lot impervious, you know, coverage. Presently, it's a hundred percent impervious aspect. It's all asphalt, buildings are there. Under the zoning, it's permitted at eighty percent. We're not even covering the impervious aspect. We're going down to about fifty-six point eight percent. That's a drastic difference that we're trying to do with the, with the building here. And I think the only thing that's important to understand is your. Floor area ratio. What's permitted is a one point three. We're actually reducing that. As a matter of, you know, the matter of right of one point three, we're going down to about one two, a one point two, three percent. So we're trying to create, you know, a little bit more open space, not densify the whole thing. We're trying to like create what the town's been envisioning with respect to this, this village concept and under its. Design guidelines. That having been said, I would like to say that, you know, one of the things that you always say with the lawyers, they talk too much. And that was taught to me by a really good lawyer in the past. So. What I'd rather do is instead of hearing from me, you hear from the actual people who've been working on the project, who actually submitted the material. Instead of trying to gain all the glory from what they had to say, I'm going to turn it over first to the. The applicant on behalf of the owner, which is DW Sawyer, otherwise people know her by Cassie Malatesta. She's the one who's going to be giving you a brief press presentation, and then we're going to talk to the architect. Cassie?
Sure, and Ted actually is in control of the presentation. Can we give him access for the presentation?
Yes, he should have access to the green button now.
Okay, Ted, are you up and running?
Just, can you hear me okay, Cassie, and to the planning board?
Perfect.
Perfect, excellent. I just shared the screen. Are you able to see that? Okay.
If you could actually maximize it, Ted, that would be better.
Just.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
So I thank you, John. I appreciate it. I was just going to say thank you to chairman and the board in advance. As many as you know, my name is Cassie Melatesta. I live in Cohasset right at the street on Sawyer. I grew up here. I'm a proud graduate of CHS. My family's from Cohasset. Needless, needless to say, this project holds a special place in my heart. Generations of my family before me in Cohasset have built parts of this town and I'm looking forward to carrying that torch. Especially it's such an iconic spot like 55 South Main Street. I'm grateful to be partnering with this team as well as the majority of us are local, either from Cohasset or just down through A. I wanted to say that today I'm extremely grateful for all the feedback already. I wanted to shed some light on our intent with the design. And I wanted to start by prefacing that the one thing that I had to keep reminding myself throughout this process. Is that the only thing in life that's constant is change. I remember the gas station back in its prime. And fast forward, I walk by it almost daily with my two year old son now. The site needs to be developed. It's time. It deserves it and it should be a jewel box. And leading with that, our vision and the unique challenge that we struggled with at the site. Was to thread historical elements with 21st living needs and expectations. That's the sweet balance that we're trying to achieve within the historic village. With that, I know I can say on behalf of my team that I promise to provide a sense of place that our community can be proud of and build for future generations to come. And I'm looking forward to this public process. So thank you guys. And Ted's going to. Run through a nice presentation that he's put together to walk us through the site.
Excellent. Thank you, Cassie. I just would like to introduce myself. My name is Ted Tolukeyan. The architect and owner of Tolukeyan Tolukeyan. And I would like to also mention I'm joined by Donnie Clark, who is the job captain on the project and senior designer. He's sitting to my right off screen, but. We just have really enjoyed working on this process with the team and, and I'm just going to jump right into it. So. Let me just make sure I can scroll. Okay. So I, I know we've already submitted the application, but this is a synopsis, basically a synthesis, I should say, of all of the. Documents that have already been submitted and we're going to try to put into a conversational form. That can help describe our thinking and also our proposal. I'm going to first start with some existing conditions folder of you, provide a review of the existing site plan and then show us, show the proposed conceptual design. And then of course conclude with the next steps. With questions and guidance that you can provide to us. So everyone knows the site 55 South Main. I think Cassie, you summarized it. It's a gas station lot, a lot of impervious materials. And what we do here is we have to photograph the site. It helps us in our design process to learn about our adjacencies. Our butters are a very important part of the design process. So this is a view, of course, looking on, I think this begins just a basically a walk around the site. As you see, I think town way has been a real focus on the design and ways to enhance a really pedestrian experience that. Brings people through the site along the edges. And these are some photographs of that condition as you lead up to the north to the parking. And then as you go down parking way, I think John also mentioned quite clearly how we're going to make some significant improvements to this road. There's currently not a sidewalk. Adding a universal access around the perimeter of the site, which I think will greatly enhance the pedestrian experience. Do some other views that show some of the conditions. And as you lead to the edges, in particular, this is really shows an example of those connections that go across the street. And make stronger pedestrian connections. And I think a focus on this has been accessibility and making sure our site has perimeter access. And strong pedestrian connections, not only to each of the butter side streets, but also to the ground floor storefronts that we'll show you as well. The site plan here, it's a very, actually a pretty unique site. It is about 20,000 square feet. As we know, it's in the village business zoning district. It's also in the water resource district. It is in a FEMA zone X and for most that sounds a lot, but it's above the 100 year floodplain, which does not specify a minimum first floor elevation. Its site is located in an upland area as well, which is not, it's no wetlands within 100 feet of the property. The uniqueness of the site is that there is a 20 foot wide James Brook drainage easement that runs through. The northern corner of the site. There are other two easements that are drainage easements that we're going to work to. Work with relocating. As you know, here there's some larger curb cuts. The whole site is about 135 feet of frontage, which is about two thirds are curb cuts, which only leaves about two off. Street parking spots. We're going to look to really enhance that. I have smaller. Curb cut along the front yard on parking way and really increase the number of parking spots that we'll show you on the street on South Main. Well, these are just some photos of the direct butters. And I like to show this because we like to be mindful of a streetscape here. That's very diverse in its formal language and its materials and architectural styles and patterns. And we're aware that. Being in the village business district that we really want to respect our adjacencies. Promote how it can be, how this project can be successful today, but also towards the future as the perimeter begins to develop over time. But what's wonderful about the village district is that it holds together not only with the materials and the colors. And the language in its uniqueness, but also. In its vibrant mix of uses, and we would like to enhance that and build on the success that is in the district. We also really studied the village biz, business district design guidelines. It's a great document. It's got great information and we cherry picked a few of the key points. In the district guidelines that we use as a, as a way to guide us in our design thinking. Certainly preserving and enhancing the historical and cultural heritage of the village is extremely important to us. Strengthening it with a mix of uses that is based on adding residential and commercial uses into the, into the center of town here. Promoting diverse housing alternatives that John brought up between one, two and three bedroom units. Going to speak a little bit about sustainability and resiliency. It's really a part of all of our projects, but in today's climate. Being mindful of our carbon footprint, not only in the embodied carbon with the materials that we choose, but also. In the operational carbon and the way we think about energy and systems that will make this an energy efficient. Flagship building that reflects sustainability and resilience measures. Improving the infrastructure. We're going to talk a lot about streetscape. How we access off-street parking as well as providing off-street parking on South Main Street. And enhancing the pedestrian access around the site. Ultimately being sensitive to the adjacent context. But throughout this string of conversation, we really were moved a lot by. One aspect of the guidelines, which seeks to allow for creativity and variety in architecture. That also simultaneously enhances the cultural heritage of the village. And this quote at the bottom from section 4.13 is something they're really speaking to. That we don't want to replicate one or two particular styles throughout the district. But we want to do so in a way that creates design integrity with our creativity, but being very mindful. For a character, we want to do that through the materials that are used. But also with the forms and language of the roof lines and also. The pedestrian experience in this, with the storefronts. I don't know if any of my team wants to add to those pieces. We spent a lot of time talking together about how we can use this, this guideline, these guidelines as a tool for our design proposal. No? John, you want to jump in on this?
Oh, the. You know. All right, Ted. Yeah, I think it's important that, you know, when you're looking at the guidelines, they're important to incorporate. Things that are in the past as well as towards the future. I mean, we can look at the gas station as an example. Back in 1965, when that was incorporated and they built it, why they do it because it's a trend and it actually was modern. And of course, now that we're looking at a site here that. And dated and outdated. What's nice about this new project is that it's incorporating various elements around the village. That actually you can see walking up and down the streets or going down Elm Street. And yet it is a 21st century structure. So we're actually looking at a new, shall we say age, but obviously incorporating various motifs and different items that actually. Look. Around and you can see.
Yeah. So just as we jump into the proposal, you know, we like to pair the aerial of which is really the gas station lot itself with our proposal. And it's as talked about here, it's three story building. It has a mix of dormers and recent balconies. But also creates two public plaza spaces at the north and south part of the site. That really bring people into the site. And we like to diagram in terms of pedestrian access, red lines to how people will come through. And we're looking at ways of widening, enhancing the townway pedestrian access, the public outdoor space. And then also by recessing our proposal along the corner parking way. Creating another plaza space, create a nice connection to the red line in. We've also moved the vehicular access. From South Main Street up along parking way.
There's a little bit of an echo on your.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Is that better?
Try it again, because there is an echo. Just want to make sure we're getting everything you're saying.
All right. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike, sorry about that. We bet, I just want to point out, as I was saying, that we've. Moved the vehicular access on the current site from South Main up along parking way, which is shown in blue. And that's really an effort, a way to enhance that pedestrian experience with street trees and brick pavers and outdoor public plaza spaces. And this is the first floor plan that shows. Plazas on the north and southern parts of the site. We've also created outdoor parking, which is going to be covered with the building and recessed from the street grade and, and streets with trees and planters. John did go data for the project, so I won't reiterate it as shown on the screen, but if there's questions about that, I'm happy to answer. Now just going to do the slide.
Can you go back to the previous slide with the data about the sizes of the units?
Yes. Can you see that? Okay. Yes. It's a mix of one. Two and three bedroom units that range in square footage is shown on the screen. It's important to note that we're providing 18 off-street residential parking spots. Which is 150% of the zoning requirement, which is 12 for the residential spaces. We have two commercial spaces that will have access from both plazas. Each about 1700 square feet. Under the zoning guidelines. The number of parking spaces are not required actually, and we will be providing five on-street parking spaces. The FAR is 1.23, which is less than the zoning allowable of 1.3. Building height is less than 35 feet at 33 feet, four inches. And the front yard setback was calculated with Greg Morris and is equal to the allowable. John did point out the two side yard setbacks, which I will show you, which is long town way. Which is five feet and then adjacent to the medical building, which is five foot three. Those are within the 10 foot, which is allowable. And the rear yard, which far exceeds what is able to be allowed at 146, 147 feet, which is more than the 15 feet, which is allowable. So overall, that's our data. Is there any other?
And I think it's important to know too, along parking way where we've expanded, where we've actually given more than required for a side setback.
Yes. Well, along that where.
Parking.
Along parking way where we exceed that from the central line of the street, which is beyond the 10 foot, which is allowable.
Isn't that actually James Lane, that second parking, isn't parking way, the, the parking lot?
It was formerly James. Yeah, it's all confusing. It was formerly James Lane, Lane, I believe. When the train came in, it changed to parking way. So we've interchange league. Cause people refer to it as, as different names. Not sure.
Some other aspects about the site plan is that we have worked to put a nice green buffer. Adjacent to the medical building, which is in the five foot zone, which is a mix of low plantings and tree. As well as enhancing town way by not only providing the plaza base at the north. But also screening and greenery along the edges to really enhance that pedestrian experience. And additionally, with the surface parking entrance off of parking way, that's recessed about three feet. Below parking way, which allows us to conceal it from view and also screen it with trees and underlying plantings.
Ted, I just want to interject, just so that people understand, I know that there's one, there are two one bedroom units. But I think it's important to understand, if you look through your packet, you're going to realize these aren't studios. In fact, each one of them are going to have a deck that they can go out and utilize. These actually have a bedroom with living space as well as a kitchen space. So it's, it's kind of nice to see that you have that variety, especially if you have one bedroom. At this point, no. Cassie.
So Tom, we've discussed this in prior, prior conversations when we presented to the planning board. And we've also met with the affordable steering committee. So we've discussed the option of doing onsite versus offsite. And we haven't come to that determination yet. Cause we'd like to go through the process with you guys to understand what we actually can put here.
All right, well. And required two units on site. So. If it's done on site, so and it can't be both the one measures.
If we increase the density beyond 1.3, you mean?
No. I believe our inclusionary zoning by law applies to all districts.
So. There's a discrepancy. So the village business district guidelines says that there's no inclusionary housing required. In the village business district, and then there's a density bonus allowed per the bylaw that then triggers that. Inclusionary housing component. But again, we, we discussed it more in private conversations, either onsite or offsite. We just haven't determined where we'd be doing it.
All right. We're the issue. That's all I'm saying.
No, totally.
Thank you. Yep.
All right. You guys all said that I can open it up to the board if I can.
Well, I think Ted just wants to finish a few more, just visually.
I'm just going to move quickly through the rest of the presentation, chairperson. So this is a view from the aerial that begins to show you those outdoor spaces that are leading you into town way. And then adjacent to the red line in, they also show the three story scale with the recessed balconies and the dormers. We're using a mix of materials that will range between siding and shakes. As well as open awnings that are retractable from the sidewalk. This begins to describe more the pedestrian experience that will move along. South Main Street with the street trees and the pedestrian accessibility moving around the site, which is currently all of drive access. And then of course, moving to the rear where we've along the side yards back recessed the parking. Screened it with trees and provided a nice green buffer adjacent to the medical building. And so in general, like with some of the materials, this is low up elevation that shows a mix of stained cedar siding. White cedar shingles at the roof line. Painted metal windows with casings. As well as signage and stem letters, retractable awnings and the opportunity for planters. As well as a granite stone base. So these mix of materials is something that we. And, and forms and different types of experiences, what we wanted to pull from some of the language. We felt like the roof line and dormers with the cedar shakes along Elm Street were particularly inspiring. The retractable awnings and canopies and signage on Main Street. Larger storefront windows with recessed balconies that. Red line in, we're all a part of this language. And that what that does is create a streetscape that we feel provides light and shadow. A difference in materials and a scale that helps bring it down to a human pedestrian level. Also to note is that all of the units, I say 11 out of 12 of the units have recessed balconies. Aside from having ample living space, and this will provide a great opportunity. To create, as John mentioned, not micro units, not exclusive one beds, but really good living spaces that have outdoor space that couples with the interiors. And I just conclude with a quick walk around, which gives you an, an understanding of that relationship between the red line in and the ground floor of. The streetscape entrances here at the shop fronts. A view moving towards town way and we're able to open that up and provide covered seating. That really creates a great pedestrian outdoor space. And then looking down Main Street, replacing those curb cuts. With street trees and the possibility for planters and retractable awnings and looking out. Moving back. And around. And I think this, this slide, any other off-street parking being sunk in below. The prevailing street, street grade and being screened and buffered will really provide an opportunity for really minimizing that view. So with that, you know, I think we'll end with just. So with that, you know, I think we'll end with just, you know, some of the community benefits. We see certainly a vibrant mixed-use project, you know, versus the current condition, which is a gas station, active public plazas on the north and south side, as well as landscape screening between the adjacent properties, continuous accessible access on Main Street, parking way and through town way, reinforcing those street patterns with sidewalks and street trees and increasing the transparency at the ground floor with active storefronts and outdoor seating. And in, in general as well, you know, certainly providing, changing the site from impervious site to, to almost fifty percent being pervious materials that will assist with drainage mitigation. So overall, I mean, I think that's our proposal and we're certainly happy to answer any questions and look for guidance from you. Thank you.
Um, I noticed that our peer reviewer from Western Sampson, Mr. Riordan is here. I don't know if you have any initial comments you'd like to make or do you want to just wait until you do a review? We'll hear from you next time.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, I think we'd like to wait. We.
Sorry, I can't hear him.
Jim, you're breaking up.
Receive a copy of the PowerPoint.
Is it better with, without my video?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, been with us is an issue from time to time. My apologies. So, so we're going to hold back on comments for now, Mr. Chairperson. And we would have one request though, which is that we receive a copy of this PowerPoint. I thought it was a very nice summary of the project and I think it would be helpful in guiding our review.
Absolutely.
I will absolutely get to the planning director.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Lauren, are there any comments that you have?
Um, thank you. Actually, my comment's already been covered. I was going to request a copy of the PowerPoint as well. I'd like to put it on the website for public access as one of the applicant submission documents. So, thank you.
All right, great. All right, I'll turn to the board now. My rotating alphabetical commenting, I think I left off with Deirdre. So Chris, you're the new guy. Are you comfortable taking the first comment here tonight? Your comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So first of all, there's a lot to like about the project. It's absolutely a site that would benefit for some redevelopment. We did talk about the setback at the beginning. I wonder if you've had any conversations with the abutter who would be most affected by that setback? The honor of Dr. Pompeo's office?
We have, yes.
Are you comfortable characterizing that conversation? Would the abutter comfortable with the five-foot setback?
Yes, we've met multiple times with that abutter. They're comfortable with the site. They're excited about it. And we are continuing those discussions as we progress with the process with you guys.
Thank you. And then the only other question that I have is when I look at pages twenty and twenty-one of the proposal and then I compare that to the village business district guidelines, and I am not an architect, so I'm the wrong person to to really make an absolute judgment here, but I struggle with the consistency of the architecture with the village business district guidelines. It absolutely checks the diversity box. But I would appreciate some input maybe from the architect, and it doesn't have to be tonight, around how the village business district guidelines, in particular, when you get into issues like height massing facades and roofs, how that guided your decisions in the architecture.
We, Ted, we don't need necessarily an answer. We're just collecting comments at this point.
Oh, hold on. Absolutely.
All right, anything else, Chris?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, Clark, you're up next.
Yeah, um, well, you know what? I think there's a lot to like about what the team has put together for a project. And the representations are really outstanding, the elevations, the plans and the, and the views, I think, really help, will help the board and the, and the public as a part of this public hearing process to, to, to work through, hopefully with, with an approval. With, with that said, there's, there's a, there's a couple of structural things that I wanted to address that you don't have to respond to necessarily right away as, as Tom Callahan has brought up. You're, you're collecting our preliminary comments to consider as a part of an evolution of, of what I, I think can be an excellent project. So the, the first thing is, is the building that hangs over the James Brook easement. I can see that there's a first floor area that's carved out for, for that easement. It, it's a little, aesthetically, it has some challenges, but the, the thing that I'm most concerned with that detail is that there's an easement. But, but I don't know if we can make an assumption or you can make the assumption that, that the easement only extends underground because if that were to have to be replaced, rebuilt, accessed, it would be with backhoes and heavy equipment. So I, I don't know what the, the clearance above is. It's an area that I think is worth exploring with our town engineers. And you may have done this already with exactly what that easement means in terms of, in, in terms of being able to access, rebuild, replace. For example, out in the Midwest, you know, in Illinois, there's, there's like mining rights, right? There's, there's all kinds of coal mines underneath houses and towns that people who thought they owned land didn't realize that they had, you know, a hundred-foot below the surface coal mine operating underneath the property. So it's sort of the same kind of thing where what, what is the easement exactly? And is there a vertical requirement for the easement? That, that's one.
Clark, it's such an interesting comment and we've gone through it with, with Jason and then, and John Helen as well. They both had, so aside from interpreting the easement, they had said, please study being able to fit a backhoe in. And so the height there actually allows for you to fit a backhoe, which we did study. And we do have that, which actually drives the first floor height, which then drives the second and third. So that is something that we studied. If you compare the James Brook core easement to, let's say, a sewer easement, a sewer easement will say that they need rights to the sky. Whereas the James Brook even doesn't, doesn't preface that and doesn't require it. It's more just being able to get to it, to your point, to a backhoe. So that's the way that we have interpreted it. And that's how we studied it with Jason Federico as well as John Helen.
Okay, okay, great. So that the easement doesn't have a height requirement as some easements do to the sky.
It's very, yeah, I compared it to sewer easements in town and it's very, is very, it's dissimilar.
Great. Thank you for, thank you for that explanation. The aesthetics of, of, of the building hanging out over that is, is awkward. And I wonder if you could put a, just for the sake of, I guess, the, the one architect on the board, but maybe for members of the public, a non-structural column in the corner.
I think it's a, yeah, and, and Amelia, the Amelia team actually did suggest that. I mean, I think just personally, it'd be kind of a cool experience being under there, but across the street aesthetically, it's something that we need to further study. And that was something that Amelia or our team had suggested. I think that's a good idea.
That would be one, one other suggestion. Going to the other side where in between the red line in and your southern commercial bay. I can't tell from the, from the engineering drawings where the existing berm is relative to what's planned for the curb edge. Are they in the same location or is it slightly different? And as a follow-up, could you give us an enhanced detail of that?
We could pull up the civil drawings. Greg, Greg, I believe you had brought that up and we did realign it or Ted had brought it up. I think you could see it on the civil planner. Are we aligned with the cross?
You actually can, Mr. Brewer, but we can certainly blow that up to.
I couldn't tell. So if, if that's possible, that would be great.
Yeah, just let me, let me open this up. And just, it's best on actually, hold on a second while I pull that up. This is, this is probably
Yeah.
A good drawing that can show this. But this is also is that shows the sidewalk location in the landscape drawing. But this is probably as good as.
I know in the engineering drawings, there was an easement detail and I can see the, that it's sort of dotted, dot, dot, dash, a dark line that looks like it runs across the sidewalk mostly.
Yeah, it's, it's page four of seven, I believe.
There's an easement that's shown there. So, so I guess, I guess the question I would have is, is it, is it wider or narrower from the berm to Red Lion currently than what you're proposing to the sidewalk?
Ted, you're on mute.
So this is Greg Morse, I'm the engineer that did the civil site plans for this to address the issue for that. If you look at the civil site plans, you won't see what's depicted as a line that's a, you know, the edge of the traveled way because the whole site is asphalt there. There isn't an edge of pavement or an edge of the road, if you will.
Yeah, no, I thought there was, there's a berm there.
There is. There's a slight berm there. The answer ultimately though is, is that the pavement that's the road becomes slightly smaller. We are putting a sidewalk on that side of the building. And so the pavement does get slightly smaller. I believe it bumps into that existing traveled way by about two feet. We did run the fire truck turning analysis on that coming in and exiting the site, just to make sure that it wasn't going to be an impediment for public safety at that location. And we can provide those templates.
Okay, yeah, if you could do a blow up detail of what's, what's existing and then what's proposed. And, and I would say that something that's related to this, if it is narrower, it is kind of an attenuation point that the, the, I, I mean, I like the operable awnings. I think they look great. The storefront design, I think, works really well. But I could definitely see those, those awnings getting taken out where, where it's narrower. So that may be an area to take a look at or maybe the awnings stick out three feet instead of the, the full sidewalk width. I'm not, I'm not really sure. I just, I could see a box truck taking them out. That's all.
Yeah. And I just want to point out that those, I, I agree, we can make those canopies not project as farther, but they did project over the sidewalk dimension currently. And they're actually, I think about a foot back from the edge of sidewalk. It was important, Clark, maybe just to see the building turn the corner there to create a better, you know, portal when you move up parking way. But we can study that a couple of different ways.
That sounds good. The other, in, in terms of the setbacks and what was discussed earlier, the, the, the front side and rear setbacks, I, I, I'm certainly, I have an open mind about that. And, and will continue to have an open mind in, in terms of making a final, final decision and what gets incorporated into a final decision. Related to that, of course, as, as an architect, you know, I worry about building code compliance and, and fire ratings. Do you have a handle on what your requirements will be between Red Lion and on your, your commercial? And are you going to have to have rolled down grills?
Question. So this is the, the property dimension at that location is probably, I got to guess, twelve to fifty with a NFPA thirteen sprinkler system, the percentage openings, I think, will be twenty-five percent, but we got to check that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just, and, and the same would be true to the property line on the, on the walkway as well as on Dr. Papio's side. And I, I, I don't think there would be an impact on opening design for the front in terms of what's, what's required to be compliant for fire ratings. But being fully sprinkled, that means there's a level of protection as, that gives you a lot more flexibility. The, the other, other point I wanted to make has to do with the height. It looked like you were over thirty-five feet from the average grade to the flat roof. And I, I see there's equipment up there. I would, I'm sorry, did I say that right? You're, you're over the thirty-five foot height requirement. It looks like it's thirty-eight and change from the average grade.
To the center line of the pitched roof were less than thirty-five feet.
Right, right. But it's a flat roof structure. I mean, you've got a little pitchy thing out on the, out on the edge, but essentially you've got a flat roof structure. I don't, I don't know if you can make that stretch and get the additional three and a half or four feet of height.
The Congress, yeah, we, I think we'll go back to some of the conversations that we had with the building department in terms of the roof line and the percentage of the dormers relative to the mansard roof. So it's something that we continue to, to talk about.
Okay, that's fine. As long, I'm, I'm flagging it as, as an area of concern and certainly compliance with the table of area regulations and height requirements is, would be a part of this, a part of this project. The rooftop equipment doesn't have any screening, but it is set back significantly from the edge of the roof. I, I think as a follow-up, I'd like to know what the, what the sound data is for what you're proposing for HVAC equipment. It's possible you might need some screening, visual screening. It just depends on if they can be seen from somewhere or, or a residence. Sometimes I, I'd say from a design perspective, adding screening to HVAC units or anything else on a rooftop can make them look bigger and more problematic. So I would leave that to your tender mercies to, to address. But having the sound data is critical, I think, for the neighbors on what you propose for, for rooftop HVAC.
I have to say, Mr. Brewer, I, I, I'm remiss and I, I actually told Ted to take out the visual so that you could get an idea of whether or not you could see the equipment from the street. So we'll make sure that we have that for you, that that was on me because I said that's something that I'm not sure they'll be asking. So.
What I see in terms of where they're located, they seem to be in a, in a reasonable spot. And, and as I've said, I think that sometimes adding screening can make the, the problem worse. You try to hide it and you build a big, big wall. With that said, HVAC equipment can be noisy. Sometimes the more expensive stuff is the, the stuff that's quieter. We want to get that sound data so that our engineers can evaluate it and give us their unbiased opinion.
I, I think Ted is showing you the, the slide I told him to take out.
And finally, I, I would say that the parking concept not being underground and mechanical, I think, is a smart move. I think that's a smart move. I don't know what the cost we're going to be, but the, the stacking system, I'm going to keep an open mind about. Other members of the board may have stronger opinions about, about it. But I, I, I think it's, it's very good to have a maximum and exceeding the minimum number of parking spaces on sites.
Can I just add to that comment for a second? So there are twelve units. I understand your question about the tandems they asked, that you're referring to. So there are six tandems, excuse me, seven tandems, six tandem, seven spots here and five here. So all twelve units have direct access. So there's no sharing of tandem spots between residential units.
All right. Again, I, I gotta keep an open mind about, about that. I, I think maximizing the onsite parking, it, it, it could, you know, this, it's going to take some management to, to get people to move, but I think that that could be worked out. What other members of the board think, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think I've, I've used my time and again, I, I think this is an excellent.
Our intent there was really just to alleviate.
Our intent there was really just to alleviate stress on the town parking lot. But that's really what our intent was there.
I understand. And, and like I said, I, I've got an open mind about it. Again, I think maximizing the number of onsite parking sponsors would be a priority for. For you as a developer and I think as a priority for the planning board as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the rest of the members if we can be brief, please.
Well, I wasn't brief.
Clark, I get.
I need as much feedback as possible, Tom.
Clark, I get it. All right. I'm just going to be brief. I'm concerned about the inclusionary zoning and I'm going to be a stickler about it. I'm concerned about the height and the way I just heard the measurement is being calculated to the middle of the slope. I consider this a flat roof. Not enamored with the design of the flat roof and certainly the height is going to be measured to the flat roof in my book. And then lastly, I, I have to say, I mean. Aesthetics are a tough thing to decide on, but this, and I understand the design is different from what you presented during informal discussions, but. I'm not enamored with the design right now as fitting in to the village.
Any suggestions, Tom, or?
You know, you know, I understand it says variety. They are just guidelines, but you know, it is a colonial looking village for the most part. I get modern and edgy, but I'm not sure Cohasset Village is the place for modern and edgy. I, I'm, I'm open minded at this point, but you know, and I'd like to see what townspeople think. And. I would like to see these designs not only on the town's website, but I'd like to see them on the 143 Facebook page to get some other feedback from people in the town who aren't going to show up. To these meetings. Because it is, I think, quite significantly different than everything else in the village. So that's all I'm going to be concerned about. I'm only going to say to Jim Rea. You know, please give a thorough review of the design guidelines as much as you can by law in your review of this. All right. Amy, do you have anything?
I do. I didn't hear if Amy said she did or did not have. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, things are coming through scratchy over here. Okay, I'm glad to hear that. If it gets bad, just tell me, but I'll try to be brief. I think some great comments were raised here and I also would say I commend the group for your creativity and openness to incorporating elements.
Kevin, we just lost you.
Work for its location.
Kevin, Kevin, you froze up. Turn off your video. Thanks.
Okay, maybe this is better. A couple of questions and then just an observation from what I've seen and put in front of me. Everything we talked about and has been shown is above, above ground. Is there any basement to this building or this be built on slab or piling? What, what's going on below the ground here?
Ted, you're on mute.
Just first off, there's no basement space in the project. We, the type of foundation system we've reviewed with our structural engineer and geotech engineer in the, during this process. But a final determination hasn't been made yet, but I can assure you we built, you know, to code and also to the standard necessary.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because this was a former gas station. I, I assume before ownership of the property was taken or during the course of that. Due diligence, environmental work was done. Was, was there any environmental issues that were found in this area at this site in particular?
We engaged a geotech engineer as well as a, an LSP. We were asked to remove the tanks before closing. So we did a very thorough investigation. So the tanks have been removed and we have. About 12 to 15 pourings for wells and soil contamination. So we have studied that, yes.
Okay. And was it, was it, was it closed out by the LSP? Was there determined to be a release of contamination below ground from those tanks?
It has not been closed out. It's our, it's, we've learned from the LSP that it actually doesn't need to be closed out because of the levels of contamination, but as a pro, as the. Progress, I'm sorry, as we progress, I think that we are willing to figure out, you know, exactly what would need to be done based on what we were building, where we, where we're rebuilding. Obviously before when we had underground parking. And taking out all that dirt, it wouldn't be a, something that we even have to think about because we'd be taking out the dirt. But now that we're just slab on grade, we just need to further study exactly what we need to do. But it was our understanding that it doesn't even need to be. Closed out because it's, it's the levels weren't at that necessary level we closing it out.
Okay. Just some observations with regard to the design and I've heard the word awkward used and I think. That rings true to what I see. In particular, when we're looking at the third floor of this and the flat roof line and the harsh edges. And I was trying to get a sense as to where I've kind of seen this design before and it's. Places that come to mind are not places that I think are analogous to a village center or our town in particular. You know, it's just, it's a boxy looking structure, especially when you look at it from street level on high. Or when you look at it across the street. Or perhaps when you look at it from an adjoining building, perhaps on the second floor or so of an adjoining building, it's going to look like a box. These are very hard edges. While some of the roof pitch does provide some relief, you know, the angles are at a 90 with the windows. And I think that creates that box like structure that, you know, when I think about where I've seen that before, City Hall in Boston rings a bell. And over at the Hingham Shipyard rings a bell with some of the current buildings over there that are used for residential structures. So I don't think it fits from that regard from what I'm seeing in these renderings and I'd like to see more options with regard to that. And when you present and perhaps propose some different options, show it, show what it'll look like from the sidewalk across the street. Perhaps show what it would look like from. A, a two floor view, a second, second floor view from an adjoining building or a third or fourth view from an adjoining building. So that when you look at the roof lines and you look down the street, does it fit in with what's next to it, what your butters are? And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin, Amy, sorry, we skipped over you, but. Amy, are you there?
Tom, can I just follow up on, on Kevin's comment? Cause what, what? Like it's not a form of a discussion or deliberation, but I think, I think the point is, you know, the, the aesthetics at ground level are dynamite. They're perfect. They're, they're, the, the. Goose heads and the, and the awnings and the, the, the massing of the openings, they're, they're great. It's, it's where the, where the, those dormers hit the sky when you're looking up at them. There's, there's, you know, half a dozen narrow ones and, and maybe slightly less of the wider ones. But, but you know, from, from at my perspective as an architect, the, 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 the space inside would be dynamite with these high. The proportions reaching up to the sky. But I think that the compromise that the team probably wants to evaluate would be, would be knocking down the heads of these, of these dormers a little bit and, and perhaps. Creating what's, what's called a shed type of a dormer for, for each of these. I mean, the, the, the number and the, and the separation. They're, they're a great element, but if these little sections had, had a pitch to them of 412 or 612. With some more traditional detailing at the eaves. I think. The aesthetics would. Be better contextualized. And, and I would have expected that you, I, I expect that you. Would understand that there's going to be some pushback on that. The materials themselves, the choices are excellent in terms of their relation to the, to the design standards and. Are high quality and I have no question about the materials. It's just these dormer. Square edges.
Tom, can I make a comment?
Yeah, I'm trying to move on.
Yeah. So, so could you, could I see that, could we go back to the, the roofscape picture? No, not this one, that one that actually shows the context. Okay. So the, for me. I agree that the, some of the, the details that are really going to be nice for people in terms of places to sit, places to, to observe, places to go in and out. But if you look at the space that you're working with contextually. The, the, the challenge is, as Clark said, it's the top of the building, the, 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 this is, to me, this is not. This is not a 21st century space and that's not a negative comment. This is a space that has a historical form. And so figuring out how to blend the bottom, which is modern, but also retain the, the roofscape, I think is going to be really. Important for the, for the long term. Kind of a feeling and, and, and experience that people have with the building. I mean, there are other things that I can say, but we want to move on. I just feel like. Thinking about how do you take, because you talk about this fitting into the space, but really it sticks out in the space. And, and I think for the community to feel secure that what's going to happen is going to fit in because their houses are like that. That we really have to think about, what are we going to do with the, you know, second and third floors?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
We have the great pleasure of being the last on the list. So a lot of the comments I completely agree with. I am wedded very much the affordable housing piece. I would really like some more investigation into that component. And hear more about how we're going to address that within this development. You know, the fact that they're right now are none is concerning to me. We have a large problem in town that's not being addressed. And then I, again, with Clark's concerns about the HVAC sound and look on the top of the roof, I'm not enamored either with the flat roof. I don't think it fits into the village scape at all. Architecturally, I think this building's beautiful to be honest, but I'm not sure it fits downtown Cohasset. I have seen buildings like this in Wellesley and other towns like that, but I'm just not sure the, the height of the windows as, I think I would like to see some more dormer. Situations in there. And if maybe there's some way to readdress that. And the screening of the roofscape is, it's just hard for me to see it in Cohasset Village. I love the presentation. I would really like to have this available so we can continue to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Before we go to the public, Jim Rea, when I see your hands up, is there something else you want to add?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a quick question because the past use of the gas station was brought up and I guess. There may be some environmental site data that's available. I don't believe we got any of that information with the, with the application. I could be wrong about that, but if we could get that, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, you can make a note of doing that, please. All right. I see we have a comment from Ms. Keiser, 28 Pond Street. It goes along the lines of the aesthetics and pointing out that Ted, your, one of your designs seems to be similar to a design of a project in Mattapan. Making the point that this might be more aesthetically pleasing for an urban environment than Cohasset Village. At the moment, I tend to agree with that point of view, but we have Mr. Farag who wants to speak, so.
Does the project in Mattapan have cedar shakers and cedar clapboard?
I, I, I'm just making, I'm just repeating her comment. I, I don't know myself, but I, I certainly.
You said you tend to agree with it, Tom.
Well, I, as a laborist, yes, this strikes me as a more appropriate project for Boston or Quincy or an urban environment, not for Cohasset Village. Just in the aesthetic, so. Lauren, if we can promote Mr. Farag for a comment?
I believe I just did.
Hi, everybody. It's David Farag, 39 Beechwood Street, Unit 4. Obviously resident of Cohasset. I grew up here. I grew up in the village, in fact, for most of my life and lived down there. I had a couple of questions that I had forwarded over to the planning board before and I hope, I hope you got those. Can everyone hear me well?
Yep.
Okay, good. The first one was is for, for the construction would be on the James Brook Culvert. That culvert is the flood control for the town, you know, going down. And so it, when construction starts on this, I would just ask that it probably be flagged. So that it's known when they're during construction that they don't hit it or, or come close to it because I know things can happen during construction. Or where they place vehicles or the like. The, the easement, as far as I, I, that's the first time I had heard that there was overhang on it. You know, there could be a potential where the easement is, is burdened from it by the height, but I, I don't know. That would have to go through town hall as far as for that. The second one was is on the, on the red line inside on the parking way. Was as far as that is to, is, is as many feet as you can get, making that wider. Every foot is worth its weight in gold. I realize it's not going to be a, a single lane on both sides. It's not, it doesn't have the, the width for that. But every foot is, is valuable to get over there and also to be able to turn there as well. So the, as best as the planning board could do on that, that would be helpful. The sidewalk is a, a great improvement because right now, as you know, people are walking in the street as they're, as they're trying to make it to the town parking lot from that side. And then thirdly, was I, I had a question on the, the, the parking on it. And I know they had talked about it when you have pinned parking like that, even though it's going to be unit by unit. I, I hadn't seen that before of being passed. I, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. Because they explained it very well, but it's just something new that I think the planning board needs to look at to see if that's the, the proper use of parking. For, you know, construction for this, for this area, when the village bylaw was created. One of the places that they, I'm sure they were looking for reconstruction was the gas station. And so this is the opportunity now and the people have, have come forward to do it. And so I think it'll be a welcomed addition. But with that being said, when it comes to the aesthetics. I, I sent some comments to the planning board regarding it. I, I don't think it complies with the, with the village guidelines regarding that. And I think the reading of.
Can you be, yeah, can you be more specific on what you mean by that?
Sure. Under 4.1 point 3, in using that as an exception to sort of paint a Picasso. I don't think that's what it meant when it's talking about the creativity. I think it's talking about the creativity within the guidelines of. Of, of the village design guidelines, not being able.
David, I'm just not understanding what you mean by that.
In other words, not being able to, it's not a free pass to jump out of the guidelines because there's about 24 pages in there about what materials you need to use, what. There's pictures even as, as a potential to look at of other things in the village. And so I think.
So are you, are you saying you're not happy with the materials?
No, I'm not happy with the aesthetics of it. The materials should be fine. They should qualify. It's, it's.
Which other buildings in town? I'm just trying to understand. So I think it's really helpful and it means a lot to me. So I'm just, which buildings in town are you referring to that we should be looking at?
I, I think it, it would be more of the, 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 the type of design. So in other words, if you were looking at a colonial design. Or even a federal Victorian or Greek revival, those are things that you see among town, among even around the common. We have one of the most iconic commons in the Commonwealth. We've had, we've had Hollywood even look at this, you know, look at Cohasset to. Look at the quintessential New England town in order to film here. In the past and even indie movies on top of it. And I think that, that this would again, as other people have commented, you'd be more seen in a downtown. City, you know, like Quincy or places like that. But it would not be seen if you were in, in building in some of the other towns. So it's just on the, on the aesthetics.
David, that was exactly, I was just, I was looking for those trigger words like colonial and Greek revival. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. And, and I think if you, if you stuck with that, I mean, most of the other things, I know there's some other funky designs in the village from buildings that were built years ago, but. But basically, when you look at the red line in, you have a French country building that was, you know, built when you look across the street, you have. You know, other designs as well. But I think if you stick with more of a colonial type, that's kind of more founded about town than, than the aesthetics for, for this. But with that being said, I, I do think it's a great opportunity to develop this. I'm not against the development on this site at all. I think it will be. be great, but I just think it needs to fit in with the guidelines of of the village bylaw. And and I mean, I I know many of you were here when when we, when the village bylaw was created. And that's why it was put in was to kind of fit the new buildings, and it was about not only development but redevelopment of sites, which this site certainly is moving from a gas station there. So those are my comments and and I would say putting the design up on Cohasset 143 and see what people say regarding the village guidelines and see what people think about it.
Thank you, David. I see we have another comment. I'm not sure, Ms. Murphy, Maria Murphy at 33 Cedar Lane. Pointing out that the lot provides a lot of winter afternoon sunlight to the village. Can applicant consider the effect of the structure mass on shade and shadows to the streets and buildings across the street during the winter? We don't have to answer that right now. Take these, take that comment into consideration as well. I don't understand this law. I know we have anybody else out there from the public. So I will, we obviously need to come back on this. Need time for the peer review. We are starting to have our dance card for the 27th filled up, so I'm going to suggest we continue this at the earliest to our meeting in August. We are only having one meeting in August, which I believe is August 10th, correct, Lauren?
Correct.
Is that enough time, Mr. Chairman, for?
As well, I guess, my question is to both your team and to Jim, whether August 10th will be enough time to address the various issues referred tonight.
From our perspective, we certainly can address the the issues. I think it's getting back from the peer review if if we don't get something. Because it's, you're talking about four weeks.
Is it's early September?
The meeting after that will be early September.
Okay, September 7.
Jim Reardon, are you still out there?
I am still out there.
What do you think your, what do you think your timeframe would be?
I think that we could, that we could get comments back by by approximately the 28th. I've already spoken with folks about schedule. If that'll work for the design team, then that would work for us. One thing I would note is that I'm not available on the 10th, but I'm not sure we could have somebody stand in for me.
Procedurally, can I ask a question after comments from the peer review provided? Is there a timeframe that you would need to review the presentation prior to the board meeting?
We generally like materials a week before, so that would be the 3rd August.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if we could maybe push it to the next meeting in September, I think it's cutting it close with getting it back, getting us together, then vacations, and I'd rather have Mr. Reardon present if that's okay with Mr. Reardon.
That's fine, right. All right, so.
What, when is the meeting in September?
September 7.
September 7. All right, so I'll make a motion that we continue this matter to September 7th at 6:30.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Clark?
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Kelly, and I, Amy. Amy. Kevin?
Kevin, hi, and I.
Deirdre. Deirdre Hobbs, and I.
And Chris.
Black, I.
Amy Glasser, I, sorry.
Thank you all, and we'll see you on the 7th. And yes, if you could get the, you know, the video in this PowerPoint to us as soon as possible so we can get it out to the public. And Cassie, if you would coordinate with Lauren about what you want to put up on 143. Yeah, I would think, you know, the most representative, just one drawing, one of the pictures, but the most representative that shows the whole of the building and would give the public the best perspective, maybe one or two. So Jim, I'll leave it to you to pick which ones you want to present.
Great, thanks, Tom. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, folks. Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night's night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thanks, Jim, for being here.
Of course.
All right, so next we have the continued hearing of site plan review for 25 and 30 Situate Hill. I guess at this stage, we are in a battle of the consultants at this point or exchange. So we we received our peer review comments today. I don't know how many of the members of the board got to see it, or Greg, if your team has gotten to see it. But it's. All right, well, is our representative from TEC here?
Yes, he is, Peter Ellison.
Peter, okay. So I apologize, you know, that this all came late, but if I I look quickly look through the comments and Peter, there are some issues that are resolved. There are some issues partially resolved, not resolved. Maybe you could just give us the quick summary of where you think you're at and what additional information you're looking for. And then Greg, I'll let you respond to that and tell me where you are from your perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, terrific. Yeah, Peter Ellison with TEC, with the civil engineering peer review consultant for the board. At this point, I I just got my second letter out today to the board. Sorry for that being last minute. We turned it around as quick as we could with the holiday. The outstanding comments really, this is kind of a challenging site to develop. There's a, there's a lot of topography out there. So there's concerns with with steep slopes, long-term maintenance and stability of those slopes. I was happy to see that the driveway to access this, the area was widened from 20 to 24 feet in this latest submission, which I think is is reasonable and makes for safe access up to the top of the hill. I do still have some concerns with soil testing and the design of the stormwater system, especially as it relates to those slopes. But in my mind, I think this is, this project's headed in the right direction and is certainly something that can be, these comments are addressable in my mind.
All right. Greg, is there anything you want to add from your team's perspective or where we stand?
Sure. Also with me on the call tonight, I don't see that they've been promoted yet, should be attorney Walter Sullivan. And we also have Jeff Dirk, who's our traffic consultant. I don't know.
I'll take care of that, Greg, sorry.
Thanks, Lauren. So since the last meeting, we had submitted obviously a set of revised plans, and we included a pretty extensive letter which addressed kind of, it was an all encompassing letter to address the fire department issues, the planning board issues. Conservation had some concerns. We made a full round of revisions. Since the last meeting, the conservation commission has approved this project and issued its stormwater permit based on the stormwater design presented. We had met with the fire department. We had reviewed fire access. We had added a hydrant between the two buildings at their request. So we we really felt in good shape prior to tonight's review letter that we received. Again, late day today. In looking through this relatively quickly, there aren't any major, major items that I see in here that we couldn't address in a in a very quick fashion. So if we do end up continuing, you know, I would expect that we could have this wrapped up potentially at your next meeting. The biggest issue that I think has been raised is with respect to the slopes out at this site. We all know it's a a site that has topography challenges. We had provided essentially three different details on our plans for three different slope locations. We had slopes that were a two to one ratio, which was essentially just a grassed slope. We had a one and a half to one slope which involved an erosion control blanket, I believe, in some riprap. And then we had, thirdly, a one to one stone embankment that would be placed stones on a one to one slope. Those details that we provided are the very slope details that this board approved with the previous project, this property, and with the Cohasset Golf Course property. So we're, we're comfortable with the details that you should be comfortable with them, and I think they're appropriate at this site. Short of that, the other comments in the TEC letter here, you know, there was a reference to changing out the guardrail detail to a mast DOT spec. We're comfortable doing that. There was a question regarding silt socks and some of the catch basins. We labeled that as a typical detail. So that would encompass all of the catch basins around the site, around the perimeter of it, not just the one that we pointed to. There was deferment to the fire department on the final location of the hydrant. We would agree with that, that we would review that final hydrant location with the fire department in the water department. So there was pretty minor stuff.
And can you get written confirmation from both those departments that they're comfortable with everything? You know, when when you sort it out with them, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, I can. I can certainly get that for you. We also, since the last meeting, have met with the Board of Health and gotten the septic system and the connections approved on this site. There was a question on how we were connecting and which system. That has all been approved by the Board of Health at this point. So all of those sewer septic comments are moot point. The questions with regards to the industrial waste holding tanks, which essentially are the holding tanks that the floor drains within the building drain to, those would be required by the building department. A plumbing permit would be required to do that work. That's not really the purview of a site plan approval for industrial waste holding tanks. Those are registered through the DEP with a separate process. There was a question regarding long-term operation and maintenance regarding the stormwater systems out there. Again, this was a subdivision project that was built, you know, in excess of 10 years ago at this point. And, you know, has lacked maintenance on the drainage system out there. We had requested copies from your department of the O and M plans that were approved with that subdivision. And what we've recently been told is is that those cannot be found. There's no record of them at at Town Hall, apparently. So, you know, the applicant, you know, Paul Davis and in my team, we're certainly willing to, you know, provide O and M documents on how to maintain the catch basins, how to maintain the drainage system. So that's fairly easy to address there. Again, having just received this kind of toward the end of the day today, there's, there's a couple of smaller items here. I think these are all fairly easily addressable. Yeah, I I turn it back over to you, I think.
Yeah, all right. And I I appreciate the dilemma that creates. I just popped into my head today, and maybe we addressed this at the first hearing, but I know in the the project we recently approved for this site, we did have some conditions about the sightlines at the 3A intersection. Is that being addressed in in this at all?
It it is. We, you know, we did a site distance analysis essentially at that intersection, and the sign for the brass kettle building, which is the property to the north of us is within the right of way of 3A. And I think Attorney Sullivan would would concur. He's talked with the owner of that property about relocating that sign outside of the site distance triangle. So that would be addressed. That could certainly be conditioned that that be moved.
Peter, you okay with this design at the intersections and what they're proposing? I mean, you're you're intimately involved with the 3A project, so I just want you to be know that you're comfortable with the sightline issues that we would have at the intersection.
Yeah, so traffic engineering is not my specialty, more of a civil stormwater engineer. I I would say that probably a lot of the same comments from the previous review stand on this application. However, I don't believe T was retained by the board to perform any traffic review for for this specific application.
All right, fair enough. Quickly, does anybody, rather than go through the alphabetical list, does anybody on the board have any additional comments at this point, concerns? I see Lauren, Lauren Sam is up first. Lauren, you go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you. I appreciate that. Just a couple of added points of clarification. The, I spoke with Pam Fahey. She actually confirmed what Greg was telling you earlier about the septic system. She actually explained there used to be a very complicated history, sort of an entanglement of all these different easements and situations. They requested a copy of the deed. She provided that to me, so I can distribute that, and that can be also part of our process here. And then the other item, the archives, we the archive system is not in the town clerk's that copy of that document. However, we, it's this document from 2006. We are doing extensive archive backtrack and logging system, but from 2006, we just have not been able to precisely locate that document. But we will continue to chip away at that.
In certain corners of the basement and the attic, there's ghosts, so just be careful.
Thank you.
All right, Amy, I see your hand up.
Lauren, are you finished?
Sorry, just one last point, actually. And then Peter Ellison spoke about how that they were not retained to do the traffic portion. The reason that that was was because this project had a lower traffic demand than what was the previous project that was just approved a year ago. That's why we did not conduct that portion for this project. So those are my only points of clarification. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Appreciate it. Amy, go ahead.
So a couple of quick questions. One is, there was a discussion when we visited this project before about the actual exterior of the proposed building, and I didn't see any documentation suggesting that there'll be a thoughtful assessment of what will be the aesthetics of the building on the hill. It'll be something that'll be right at the entrance of town, and so we did discuss questions of color. And I would like to see what might be proposed by the applicant. The second issue is the extent to which there will be specifications about the you, the interior use of the spaces such that there'll be no sleeping, there'll be that there's something on the record about how this space is going to be used. Why? Because the last time we looked at this project site, we included information about that, and we made changes on things like bathtubs and et cetera, et cetera. So let's make sure that we're consistent in what we did. The third thing is, is I am still a little bit concerned. I'm I'm concerned about the the road and the extent to which it's going to be substantial enough to carry the kind of trucks that could be going up on that site. So I did get a chance to look very quickly at the peer review, and there was some discussion about that. So those are the three things I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Kevin?
Yeah, I quickly went through the comments. I appreciate them being delivered. I did have a quick opportunity to go through them. There was a reference in there, Peter, about a 12-foot drop off, and I guess that was a part of the slope aspects at the site. I wasn't quite clear on what that issue was. Was it to create a level enough space to sight the buildings or sight the parking lot? And what was the potential issue with regard to that? It was one of the initial points on your letter. Peter, and and I didn't hear Greg. I didn't hear you talk about that when you kind of went through it quickly.
I think the the concern with the slopes is the long-term stability and maintenance of the slopes. The the 12-foot drop is Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, probably about 20, 25 feet from those those buildings.
Correct.
So it's it's fairly close to the buildings. So I think we just want to make sure that we're we're planning ahead for how those slopes will be maintained in the future. You know, and and as far as, you know, safety goes, do we, do we need a fence at the top of those?
Yeah, that's, that's what gets to my question. Were were these shored 12-foot drop offs, you know, with some type of shoring device or engineered structure to hold back hold back that part of the hill? Or was this just a really steep slope portion that manifested itself with what would be an apparent 12-foot drop? And that, you 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 meant, you mentioned one of my questions, Peter, is whether there would be a fencing at the top of a sudden drop like that.
Yeah, so based off the the detail that's proposed, it's a one-to-one placed stone slope with some fabric underneath to kind of hold it in place. But I think ultimately, it's probably on the the developer or the owner's team if if they want to have a geotech involved to stand something like that, or if if that's something that Greg's team is is looking at as part of their design.
Yeah, I can, I can add to that. It's a one, like Peter just said, it's a one-to-one stone embankment there. We were not proposing any sheeting to do that. We were proposing simply to grade it off and then place the stones. It's not a retaining wall as such. It would not need a fence along the top of it, nor is it in an area that's, you know, subject to vehicular traffic or. Nor is it in an area that's, you know, subject to vehicular traffic or to um, you know, pedestrians or people being out there. It's on the the route three A side of the buildings, which essentially is the backside of the buildings. There's no real access there.
And, and, and the stormwater drainage would be rooted away from that so that um, with a severe rain event or several events or just a rainy wet season, it wouldn't start creating uh, erosional issues down such a steep embankment.
Correct, but the idea is to take the roof runoff on the buildings um, B and C and direct it to the front of those buildings, which is the, the parking lot. Um, overflow from that drainage system would be in the parking lot area would be captured in catch basins and directed to the detention basin. Uh, building A is the exception there. Building A does have a roof drywall system um, behind the building, again on the three A side. Um, I'll likely be relocating that to inside the parking lot um, based on Peter's comment in his letter today. So no, that won't be an issue uh, if we relocate it to the front of the building.
Okay, appreciate the additional details. Thank you.
Carolyn, I see your hand up. Just different looking than everybody else's hand. You're on mute, don't care.
Nope, sorry. I didn't raise my hand. I'm sorry.
Okay, alright. Uh, Walter, you gotta earn your feet tonight. What do you have anything you need to add?
Oh, no, I, I agree with Greg though. Um, Tom, I, I, we've reviewed the review letter and I don't think there's anything in there that we can accomplish in short order. Um, we've heard um, the board's comments both at this meeting and the first and we did submit new architectural materials um, and changed the color of the building to address what was brought up at the last meeting. But other than that, I think Greg has covered everything.
Lauren, with our schedule, are we looking at squeezing this in the twenty-seventh? Uh, you know, and like, like, you know, let's anticipate that the wharf is gonna take some time on the twenty-seventh. We will not, I can tell everybody we won't be dealing with the regulations but from a time perspective. But uh, do we want to do this on the twenty-seventh or the tenth?
Um, Tom, I would recommend if the applicants are comfortable that we could move forward with the twenty-seventh. I think that it sounds like they can address these things in relatively short order. And then uh, Peter, if, I mean, I guess I would turn to you then to say like, when you would be able to have the documents ready. You would need the documents to have them ready to review for the board. Typically, I mean, preferably not the day of. Which again, this was just a short scheduling um, issue. I'm not blaming anyone. This is for clarification.
And then, you know, based on a number of things we've heard and from the previous decision we did a few months ago, maybe Lauren, we can you and I can start on a draft decision and maybe have something ready for the twenty-seventh as well.
Yes, we, that's absolutely doable.
Okay, alright. Alright, then thank you all. I can take a motion to uh, continue this to July twenty-seventh, six thirty? Uh, well, I'll make that, I'll make that motion, so we just sort of did it. So anybody second it?
Tom, if I could just ask one more question?
Yep, yeah.
I, I wasn't sure if the peer review had taken a look at the slope of the road?
Uh, the slope of the driveway?
Yeah, the slope of the driveway.
Yes, we did take a look at that. Yeah. It, it's steep, but there, there's really no, no other way to, to use the property just due to the existing topography out there.
Uh, is, is there any judgment to be made about whether or not it's uh, more steep than we would say is safe, especially considering the weather that we get here in January and February?
Yeah, it's gonna be a concern. It's, it's definitely gonna require um, maintenance, sanding, salping, um, the like to, to keep it um, for safe access. Uh, certainly. Oh, uh, that's something that I can take a look at and, and see if that um, appears in any of the town regulations. I can't remember off the top of my head. And then I, I can include that in, in the next letter.
Yeah, and if, if you have any recommendations as to a condition that we deal at, you know, what kind of snow conditions might trigger? What kind of maintenance? Uh, that, that would be appreciated.
Um, can I say, I'd like to say one last thing about that.
Well, wait, Chris, are you, Chris, are you finished now?
I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
So I'd like to continue with what, what Chris was talking about. And uh, if we think back to the windy hill property where we knew they had a very steep driveway and we also knew that there was going to be um, an impervious surface. We did require that there be ways that the water was going to be wicked or channeled away from um, the roadbed so that uh, it would um, also not produce a puddle at the bottom. So that when we have snow and then we have ice, there's gonna be a, you know, a skating rink. So I would really like to both know what the degree of uh, uh, incline is on the, on the road as well as some sort of strategy to wick away the water as best possible.
Alright, well understood. And then that's kind of for the engineers. So Peter, you know, include that, you know, su- suggestions of how we deal with that. And Greg, you think about it as well.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that real quick right now. The road slope is twelve percent. Cohasset has no maximum slope for a driveway in an application like this. We met with Chief Doc Ray and you have correspondence from him agreeing that the slope is adequate on this site for fire protection and safety. Um, the owner of the property is extensively involved in snow and ice removal businesses. Um, it will be maintained appropriately during the winter months. Um, you know, it is his intent to run his uh, business on this property and be at the property on a daily basis.
Right, understood. But, you know, nothing, nothing harms us from entertaining a condition that deals with it and we can deal with it when we see that condition. Uh, a draft condition. So, alright, so the, I, did I hear a second on the motion to continue?
I seconded it.
Okay, good. Alright, so uh, roll call, Clark?
Our brewer, aye.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmire, aye.
Kevin?
Hi, aye.
Deirdre?
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
And Chris?
Chris Flex, aye.
Alright, thank you all and we will see you on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good night.
Alright, good too. Thank you. Alright, uh, next we have Black Horse, ninety-four Black Horse Lane. And um, if everybody could get promoted for that. If I understand correctly, we, we have applications, but we don't have public hearings on this. So um, I guess we can discuss, in, in the nature of what we, we are confronted with, I think we can discuss these together. I believe everyone at this point, with perhaps the exception of Chris, although I don't, I think you got the materials. Has seen that we had a uh, so we have entertained a common driveway application for uh, some time now with the now prior owner, who's the original applicant. We have a new owner of the property. We, in the winter, you know, back in February, had uh, received a preliminary subdivision application that was denied. Uh, that also was by the prior owner and today we have a new preliminary subdivision application by the new owner. Um, we have a number, I think, threshold legal issues uh, that we have to address that are going to decide whether we conduct either of these, entertain either of these applications. So I, I want to just dive right into the legal uh, uh, opinions that we have on each side. Everybody on the board, I hope, has seen the opinion from Attorney Watzke, who's represented the prior owner and I understand is representing, I assume is representing the current owner. And uh, then we also have had an opinion from our town council.
Um, Tom?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, um, Rachel Watzke is here to represent uh, the new owner, Nina Di Nuno. Could she possibly be um, also upgraded to a panelist as well as Nina Di Nuno, please?
Both, both of them have already been there here.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so um, um, I know, thrown off a bit. Um, you know, we're gonna, we'll deal with the legal opinions. Everybody, I think, has seen, you know, on the board has seen both sides of the opinions, but what I'd like the the, you know, I want the attorneys to each summarize their opinions on this, but I had three questions that I think need to be answered from a legal perspective. Number one is, can the new owner piggyback on the prior owner's common driveway application? Which is being done here. Um, can the new owner file its own preliminary subdivision application since we did a preliminary subdivision decision uh, six months ago, you know? Because the effect that it would extend the zoning freeze by six months. And then the legal, the main legal issue is can we entertain the common driveway application at all here? So um, those are the issues I'd like to see, see specifically addressed, but we'll start with the applicant, since we had received Attorney Watzke's opinion first. So whoever is going to present uh, Matt Watzke's opinion, uh, you have the floor and you have to try to be as brief as you possibly can in summarizing, you know, your legal position on those three questions.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Rachel Watzke. I'm standing in for Matt Watzke tonight. He's not available. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to go through our interpretation of the zoning bylaw, section eight point three um, in regards to this exemption, but I'm, is that the part you want me to discuss or?
Alright, so I, I mean, obviously you have, you have the new owner piggybacking on the original application of Mr. Smith. Let's, let's just deal with that between you and Carol. Does anybody have an issue that that can happen? Or not happen?
Um, Tim, I don't, I don't know of anything that prevents a new owner from substituting as an applicant for a permit application.
Alright, Carolyn, you agree or disagree?
I, I would agree with that. I, I think, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, zoning regulates the use of land. It doesn't regulate the ownership and on I think that uh, this is something that, you know, certainly a new owner can be substituted for the prior applicant. As long as there's no material change to the application.
Well, on the same token then, we, we have this new owner submitting a new preliminary subdivision. Is that appropriate? Or is the new owner subject to the decision we made six months ago? Or five months ago?
So my, if Caroline's fine with me going first, then um, my, my understanding is there's nothing stopping a new application from being filed uh, for the preliminary subdivision plan. Um, I believe.
Except, except it has the intent of extending a zoning freeze.
It's not extending, it's creating a new one. So there's not, it's not piggybacking on to create an additional seven months on top of the seven months of the prior preliminary um, subdivision plans process freeze. It's just a new seven months.
Okay, Kevin, uh, Carol?
Um, I, I, I agree that the applicant, there's nothing that prevents an applicant from filing a successive uh, preliminary subdivision plan. Uh, this isn't like it's a repetitive petition situation that we see elsewhere in zoning. Um, I, I'm gonna respectfully disagree as to uh, the comment that it creates a new seven month or a new zoning freeze. Um, you know, the, the preliminary plan that was filed, even though it was denied by the board, the filing of that plan and then the subsequent filing of a definitive plan in seven months creates two types of freezes. You know, one, there's the process freeze while the, the project is being developed. And while plans are undergoing the subdivision control law process. And then if ultimately you approve the plan, the definitive plan, there's the eight-year zoning freeze that attaches after that. The, the case law on the, the zoning freeze, the process freeze talks about how it's a fluid process and applicants may actually submit multiple plans as they try to work out a design that might be more amenable or, or that might get the approval of the planning board. So I don't think that this is a situation where tonight we necessarily, regardless of the action that you take, starts a new zoning freeze. There is already um, a process zoning freeze in place by virtue of filing a, the preliminary plan. And then following up with a definitive plan, but not a preliminary to another preliminary.
So if, if we were to deny this preliminary as we did the last one, what's the deadline for filing a definitive?
What was, I don't have the date um, of the prior, the, the, the date that the prior plan was actually filed.
I, I, I think we did the denial of the preliminary.
Um, so, right, but I, but it was back to the date that it was actually filed, not the date that the board actually um, denied it. Lauren, do you actually have access to that?
I believe, I believe Carmen probably has the date.
Um, yeah, it, it was actually um, last year, I believe. But uh, um, my question actually is for Carolyn.
Can we answer first on when the date, when the plan was filed?
Yeah, please.
So the five law preliminary subdivision filed on December eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and the timeline for that, Carol?
It has to be seven months from there that we get a definitive plan.
So that would have been in July?
Yeah.
That would have been July?
July, July eighth.
Last week.
Was the seven months on that. So um, we did not receive a definitive plan. So now, um, we are starting with a new preliminary plan outside of that. So yes, a new zoning um, process freeze will begin with this plan.
Okay. Alright, um, alright, alright. So then the last question is the question we're primarily here for is um, that we had issues with the last time was can we even entertain a common driveway application at all? Given issues around frontage. Um, so Ms. Watzke, I'll let you address that. Please be brief. Don't need a whole recitation on single lot exemption, but I'd like you to just briefly explain how you think it applies.
Um, I, I will, I will attempt to be brief. I know you've got other hearings, well.
It's a long day and a long night, so.
Yeah, agreed. Um, so as you're likely aware from the prior filing from, of the opinion letter from Watzke Law, we assert that this can have a common drive application because of the single lot exemption. In short, the, there's one specific provision of uh, the zoning bylaw, section eight point three that we think is applicable to the, this property as a whole. It would be referenced as um, section eight point three, point B, and then one through three. The general concept is that the so although the zoning bylaw can happen on the current, was someone speaking or?
No, go ahead.
Um, so although there can be the amended zoning bylaws and those provisions can change over time, this provision in the zoning bylaw, which has existed since the bylaw was first created in nineteen fifty-five, what it does is it protects a detached one-family dwelling or a law, other lawful building can be constructed on a lot that having, has lessened the required area with depth and or frontage, provided that all other provisions of the bylaw are complied with if. And so that if is where it's important. Uh, section B of that is such lot on or before the effective date of the requirements in question. Uh, one was lawfully laid out by a plan or deed duly recorded in the Norfolk Registry of Deeds. Two was in conformity with the area with in frontage provisions of the zoning bylaw, if any, applicable to the construction of such a dwelling or other building on said lot at the time of such registration or recording. And three was on set effective date, held in ownership separate from that of, of adjoining land or if held in ownership the same as that of adjoining land, had an area of not less than nine thousand square feet in the residential A district, fifteen thousand square feet in residential B district, or twenty thousand square feet in residential C district. There are other provisions that give this protection, but that's the one that we feel is applicable here. Um, that key provision extends to lots that are held in common, particularly, that was number three there. So lots that are held in common at the time of the um, oh, at the time of that ownership when they were created, they are protected against future amendments in the zoning bylaw and there is no minimum frontage requirement in that provision. That provision is specifically about area. Um, so in this case, so for, there has, this has been previously litigated. I'm not going to go into that because I'm, I'm sure you're able to read that or your town council has explained that prior litigation to you. But under those provisions for the, the property at ninety-four Black Horse Lane, the first provision, the lots were lawfully laid out by a plan and deed duly recorded in the registry of deeds. Uh, lots C, D, and E. Uh, lots C, D, and E were laid out in nineteen thirty six. Lot seven A was laid out in nineteen twenty six. These lots were laid out prior to the effective date of the zoning by law, which was nineteen fifty five. That by law did include this provision in it at the time of its at the time of its effective date. The second provision is that the lots, when they were created, they conformed. With the any provisions for area with in frontage of the by law, if any, at the time of their creation. As I've said, at the time of their creation, there was no zoning by law. Um, so they were compliant with whatever was required at the time, which was nothing, and so they do remain protected to. To the state because the the lot lines have not changed. The third provision is that the lots, although they were held in common ownership with adjoining land. At the time of their creation, they each, so each lot, not all of them together, but each lot on this property. Has an area in excess of the minimum required in that section. Um, so for example, lot C that has the existing house on it has over seventy thousand square feet. Lot D has over a hundred thousand square feet. Lot E has over a hundred and forty five thousand square feet, and lot seven A has over thirty thousand square feet. So in our perspective, the lots individually and together meet the criteria for this single lot exemption under. Uh, the zoning by law, and so they are entitled to have that detached one family dwelling constructed on them. So in the way that relates to the the common driveway application is because they're protected under the zoning by law. Um, they're buildable under the zoning by law, and then you analyze them under the common driveway rules. The ones that the rules that are applicable to the this property at this time are those that were amended in twenty, sorry, two thousand eleven. Because I know that there have been proposed amended. Uh, common driveway rules, but those do not have an ex post facto effect. And so they haven't been approved at this time. And so it's the two thousand eleven rules that are applicable here.
What about the plan in nineteen sixty one?
I'm sorry?
What about the plan that was recorded in nineteen sixty one covered these lots?
Did the plan change the lot lines? Because that's not my understanding. My understanding is that these lot lines have stayed the same. Although the. Although there have been other plans recorded, the lot lines have stayed the same from when they are created in nineteen twenty six and nineteen thirty six.
Alright, um, anything else you want to add or I appreciate. You being succinct with that, the single lot exemption is hard to explain, but I appreciate that. Uh, Carolyn, uh, your thoughts on this?
So with regard to the single lot exemption, the analysis, for the most part, as I said, in my opinion to the board. I don't disagree with attorney Watzke's um interpretation of eight point three B. Or for the most part, the application, but Mr. Callahan, as you just hit upon. What about the nineteen sixty one plan? Um, attorney Watzke's opinion relies refers to a nineteen thirty six and a nineteen twenty six plan. Um, I will note that uh they refer to in attorney Watzke's op- opinion. He refers to lot seven A being laid out by a plan um in dated nineteen twenty six. Um, we went through the plans on record at the registry of deeds and the nineteen twenty six plan that we located. Has a lot seven, and it has a lot seven B. But we did not see a lot seven A. Um, just to just one clarification there. Then with respect to um. The nineteen sixty one plan, again, attorney Watzke's opinion does not refer to a nineteen sixty one plan. We did locate a nineteen sixty one plan. Um, and we uh refer to describe this in a little bit more detail in footnote one. And in my opinion to you, and we also included a copy of the nineteen sixty one plan. And um. To attorney Watzke's comment or question whether or not that nineteen sixty one plan changed the lot lines. Yes, it absolutely did. Because the nineteen sixty one plan included a note that said lot B two, which was a sliver of lot B. Uh, lot B was being broken into lot B one and B two. And B two was being separated from lot B one and being merged or combined with lot C. So um, since this happened in nineteen sixty one, after the town adopted zoning. Uh, it's it's my opinion that lot C um is no longer entitled to the single lot exemption. Um, but the other lots shown on the um nineteen twenty six. If we can find lot seven A and nineteen thirty six plans would qualify for the single lot exemption. Um, do you want me to go further, Mr. Chairman, and talk about common driveway, or do you want to go back to?
My my next question to both of you, what about the fact that these lots have no frontage at all? Car- Carolyn, you can go first on that.
Alright, so I am going to disagree with attorney Watzke's opinion. That even though the lots qualify for single lot exemption under section eight point three of the by law. I want to make something clear. This is a provision of your by law that is unique to casit, but there is. Um, you know, some um basis for this found in the zoning act. But the idea is that undersized lots. Or especially undersized lots that may um be commonly owned. Are not forced to merge. You know, Cohasset has specifically carved out this exemption, and I don't disagree again. That that the lots qualify as being shown on plans and having sufficient area, et cetera, et cetera. The where I do disagree, however, is with the leap from. Let me pause for a minute. So. In my opinion, under the single lot exemption, those lots, with the exception of lot C that was changed under the nineteen sixty one plan. Are buildable lots. Ultimately, though, I'm going to tell you, explain to you why they are not buildable via a common driveway. I think what the proper procedure would be is for the applicant to file a subdivision plan, and here's why. If we start with. Section eight point three and the purpose uh with the preamble paragraph with respect to the single lot exemption. It talks about the fact that the lots would be um exempt from any area width, depth, or frontage. Um, require, you know, any lot that doesn't have the required area with depth and or frontage. But it goes on to say, provided that all of the provisions of this by law are complied with. So now we've got to go to your common driveway provisions. And I think the first thing we want to look at is quite simply the definition of a common driveway. We define a common driveway as um. A driveway having access over legal frontage and serving more than one lot. All lots served having legal frontage. A common driveway may not serve as legal frontage. So what is frontage? The by law defines frontage as. The length of the line dividing a lot from the right of way of the street on which it bounds. None of these lots bound on a street. None of them have frontage. And because of that, and because of the way you have defined a common driveway. As requiring a driveway to have access over legal frontage. And the fact that the common driveway cannot serve as that legal frontage. What you essentially have here are a bunch of lots with zero frontage. That in my opinion cannot be served by a common driveway. If the applicant wants to come in with a subdivision. Yes, I think that is the proper way to go, because again, I'm not saying that the lots, with the exception of lot C. Are not protected as buildable. But I do not think that it can be done or that we cannot consider a common driveway application. Because the lots don't have frontage and don't satisfy the by law.
Thank you. Ms. Watzke.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Watzke, you want to? Deal with that? So address that with comments?
Sure, I I can address to the best, to to the extent that I can. I'd like to point out that lot C at least already has a house on it. Um, so it's 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 been built on at this point. So although the lot line might have been adjusted in nineteen sixty one, there is a house on there already, and we're not proposing to tear the house down and. Put a a new house on there. It's the house is there, so I'm not entirely certain. What the, I guess, the the alternative would be for. For that issue at least, um, although I disagree with that interpretation. The other comment about the frontage versus uh as part of the definition for common driveway. Um, as I I don't have that in front of me, but I would, is that part of the zoning by law or is that part of the. Planning board's common driveway rules and regulations?
Definition is in the.
No, those are the definitions taken out of the zoning by law.
Okay.
Alright, um, well. So in 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 light of this, I guess we're in a position tonight. To make a decision on whether we are going to entertain a common driveway application or not. And whether we are, we're going to entertain this preliminary subdivision request. Um, I guess that that's clear that we will address that, and the question then, I guess, becomes for the board. Are we going to? Treat it in the same way we did before and deny it, wait for the definitive, or are we going to approve it, so? If anybody, uh, if the hour is getting late, but if anybody on the board has some thoughts about this, you know, I'm I'm inclined. Uh, you know, my only legal head, but also to follow Carolyn's advice on this and in the direction that we should be going, so. Um, anybody else on the board? Yeah, Clark, go, yeah, you're actually next.
I read both legal briefs, one one time.
Yeah.
Um, and but I understand that the the common driveway uh standard assumes that. There are lots that were created with with frontage. Um.
Say that again?
The the common driveway um option. Assumes that lots were created with. Actual frontage on a way.
I.
The language.
Yeah, yeah, you you.
Common driveway.
You can't.
It crosses.
You can't, you can't build a common driveway on lots unless they already have frontage on a way.
Right.
Right, and then then and then the driveway itself has to access a way, that's, you know.
And and eight point three and um Master General Law Forty One, section six. Doesn't address that specifically.
Well, I I think that, you know, Carolyn can correct me. I think those are two completely separate issues, and I think Carolyn's pointing that out. That the single lot exemption is doing one thing. And and we're finding that all lots except one. Qualify. The one that doesn't happens to have an old house on it. Um. And then separate from that issue, though, is. Whether the common driveway can be utilized as means of access given our by law definitions. So the single lot exemption really is a sideshow and is not really relevant at this point. It's it's whether we can entertain the application at all under our definitions of what a common driveway. Must be and what kind of lots it can serve. If if that is that correct, the summary, Carolyn, or where we are?
Yes, yes, I mean, you can still entertain the preliminary subdivision plan.
Yeah. So.
But as I said, it it's my opinion that a common driveway is not appropriate for these lots.
Alright. Anybody else on the board have a thought, comment, question about that?
The uh uh one more thing is.
This is this is real legal inside baseball. I got news for you all, so I don't.
The existing houses that use the current common driveway. There's a total of two, and there's. Three lots that could use a common driveway in theory additionally.
I thought it was more, I thought it was closer to six, or I thought it was even more beyond the eight that it was.
Ninety has its own, has its own driveway. Eighty, the new house that was built, uses the existing common driveway. Seventy is the house that has yet to be built. Um, presumably is an orphan as well as all of the other lots with the exception of. Those with a house on them currently.
Your point, Clark?
How many lots are we talking about? I'm just trying to confirm, how many lots use the existing common driveway? Or an actual dwelling unit? And how many lots could potentially use it?
Um, may I answer that question?
Yes, please.
Um, so at the end of Black Horse Lane, uh Jack's property began, and that is number seventy Black Horse Lane. After that is number eighty, which is under construction. So both the uh number seventy uses the very entrance of the driveway and then it deers on its own. And then with the driveway turns, it gives access to number eighty, which is under construction. Number ninety, which I guess will be under construction uh soon, and number ninety four. So though all of those are. Uh, existing separate lots, and then, you know, we're proposing an additional three new houses. In the remaining lots of associated with ninety four. So that would be a total of either six or seven. Including the proposed three houses.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
And alright, anybody else on the board?
Sounds like a subdivision to me.
Lauren, do you have anything to you that you'd like to add?
I would just suggest if there's any directives that the board might wish to share with the applicant, I think sometimes the preliminary process to get that feedback. Before they get into the details of it, so if there's anything in particular, other than just directing them towards the. Sort of dimensional standards, that would be helpful to let them know that now.
Okay. Alright, um. Attorney Watzke, is attorney Watzke, is there anything else you want to add?
Yes, so for one, i- if possible, I would like to see Carolyn's opinion so that I can have a sense of what. Her her thought process was so that we can more fully respond to it. Um, in in addition, if you are at this time leaning more toward. The focus on the preliminary subdivision plan than on the common driveway, I would ask that you at least just continue the common driveway hearing so that we have time on our end. To take a look at it and and the provisions that you've mentioned and come back with a response for you at the next hearing.
Uh, how, I mean, I'm personally, I don't think it changes, and I don't. With due respect to your legal skills, I'm not sure you'll come up with anything that changes. I think the definitions that we have are pretty straightforward, and it's. Pretty straightforward that none of these lots have frontage on any way. But I'll leave that to the board if we want to continue it, but I would. So I personally would be prepared to introduce a motion to deny the common driveway application. Um, I see we have a number of attendees. We have seventeen. Uh, is there anybody out there that wants to speak on this briefly?
I'd I'd like to, uh, this is Nino Dinuna, the current owner.
You're the current owner?
Yep.
The current, I thought the current owner was a corporation.
Sure, but I, yeah, I'm part of that.
Alright, that's fine. No, that's fine, just a clarification.
Could could even either Carmen or or Rachel talk about the delta between the number of houses? And the su- suitability to the access from Black Rock, uh Black Horse Road. Uh, between a common drive and what we're proposing of three houses versus. What could potentially become of a subdivision in the seven lots? And then the frontage that, you know, could potentially be given to seventy Black Horse Lane to add two more homes.
You know, I I'm gonna cut you off there because I I I think we all understand the implications. In addition to Cohasset being an outlier on our single lot exemption and how many lots we allow to be served by a common driveway. We're we're an outlier on our frontage requirements. Um, and there's the potential, because we have minimal city-like frontage. Uh, there could be more lots here than we'd want, but. You know, our by law is written a certain way, and I don't think we can just ignore it for our convenience. Um, a- as much as it would, it would bother me, um, and.
Right, but for the benefit of you're talking about the number of people in the audience that are interested in this.
I I.
You know, there's a big difference between what we're proposing and what we could do. On the 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 ten acre lot and.
And if you wish to do, you know, you wish to do that. Well, if you wish to take a maximalist development point of view, yes, you can do.
Well, we don't, we don't, but the 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 cost of the subdivision could push us in that direction. I think it's good. For everybody that has concern in this small little neighborhood. I think it's good for everybody that has concern in this small little neighborhood, myself being included. I will be residing there. Uh, it's good for everybody in the public to understand what you're proposing versus what we're proposing. Carmen, could you, could you elaborate on that?
I just actually.
Mr. Dinunno, excuse me, I'll, I'll decide who's going to speak next. I, I, I understand your point. And then there is also a point that in either scenario, you are increasing the usage of the existing Black Horse Lane. And.
Right, nowhere near what we could increase it to.
Well, the subdivision, the subdivision process allows us the opportunity to see improvements to Black Horse Lane. Um, and that may be an advantage that outweighs the usage that would be.
Right, but.
I don't know, I don't know that yet. I don't know.
The possibility for improvements to Black Horse Lane are almost nonexistent. If you look at the width of Black Horse Lane in the entirety, and how close the homes are to it, you could never improve that road to the extent that you would require, so.
That, you know, then, you know, I, I, I'm on the committee looking at the zoning bylaw, and this is, this is making some of my points about Cohasset being an outlier and so many things, and it comes back to bite us.
Right, but there's a reason.
We seem to, we seem to be in a no win. You're, you, we, we seem to be being put into a no win situation here, and, and that's unfortunate, but, you know.
Right, but if you take a, take a common sense approach to it.
I can't ignore the language of the bylaw legally. That's the problem. Was, as much as I might want to personally, I can't legally ignore the bylaw as it is written today. And if it creates a subdivision that might be worse for the community in terms of density and traffic and everything, you know, those are choices the town made a long, long time ago that I'm trying to help rectify, but I can't, you know, I can't, I gotta follow what the bylaw says. So that's, that's my dilemma as an attorney, that I don't think I can just ignore it for the sake of expediency as much as I might want to. Amy?
Um, yes, I'd just like to, to remind everyone that the reason that we would be in a position to expect that a, a subdivision would be in place is because of safety and accessibility. And so adding more people to what is already not a functional drive is something that is against what a planning process would expect. And so it's really about safety.
Has the, the fire department already weighed in on the common drive approach, Carmen?
Excuse me, Mr. Dinunno, 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 excuse me. You do not call on somebody to speak, if you might, all right?
I can have my representative chime in.
All right, please.
So I, I, I had a question, because the intention of this project is really to continue with a common driveway, uh, because it was never the intention to create a subdivision road. And we were willing to treat the existing twenty-foot right of way as a common driveway. I say existing common driveway, however, there, this twenty-foot wide, come on, what, right of way was part of an A and R that created the lots, you know, seventy, eighty, and ninety, the way we have them. So I just, I don't understand why this hearing for a common driveway couldn't be continued when there are so many questions, including the question of whether or not uh, these lots have frontage through that twenty-foot right of way. I, I just don't think that there is any clarity that, there is absolutely no frontage. Where it would just be dismissed.
It's, it's pretty clear in its face, there's no frontage for these lots. But anyway, what, what's the board's pleasure on continuing the common driveway application? And, and frankly, to the applicant, you're going to have to be super creative and figure out how a common driveway applies under the definitions of our bylaw, that you don't have the frontage. And if you can find a way, a legal way around that, I'm all ears, but I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm bound to following the language of the bylaw.
So Tom, if we, if we didn't just deny the common driveway application right now, this is what you're kind of alluding to. Um, the applicant can appeal it in, can appeal our decision?
It's not a public hearing process, I, I don't know that they can, but.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a component of zoning.
Yeah, I, I agree. Carolyn, is there an appeals process?
Happens next, if.
Right, hold on, hold on.
I'm just looking to see if there's anything in the bylaw, and I don't see anything in seven point three. I suppose that what they could do.
Mandate this action, maybe.
I was thinking assert appeal, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Something, I mean, the, the short legal answer, there's another way of doing it probably.
I mean, in terms of what our counsel has indicated, that it doesn't, the, that the, the, the lots would not conform to the rest of zoning, and, and, and it's in her citing of under seven point three, where the lots don't have legal frontage. Seems like our hands are tied.
Right, I mean, because, and because of the way this town has set fifty-foot frontage, it may create a worse situation, a more intense development situation, should the property owners go down that road to maximize development of these properties. But, you know, that's where our town bylaws lead us to this point today, you know. And we're at a point too, where the value of land and lots is such that it's driving these hard decisions that have been avoided for decades.
So in terms of what the legal thing is, that's, that's one, one thing. But in terms of what you would see on the ground, what's proposed as in the preliminary subdivision, twenty years, twenty-something foot wide swath of asphalt with a cul-de-sac at the end, compared to an eighteen-foot wide swath of asphalt with a hammerhead at the end. These, these aren't, um, in terms of what you see on the ground, significantly different solutions to, um, uh, access. It's just that one provides new frontage, the other does not. Okay.
Except that there also might be more lot development under the subdivision choice as well.
Sure.
Um, let me, before we get further with the boards and making a decision, I see one hand up in the attendees. Uh, Lauren, who's PHF three, and does they want to be, does that person want to be advanced to speak?
I'll grant them permission to talk. Um, if you could indicate your name and address for the record, we can't take anonymous, and we can't tell who you are by your name right now.
Phil Faulkner at seventeen Black Horse Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Um, my concern goes back to the safety issues. Black Horse Lane is so narrow, in the last two emergencies, one including picking up, uh, Mr. Keen on his last demise, when he demised. They have not moved any of the fire trucks past twenty-eight Black Horse Lane because of, uh, of, uh, not having a place to turn around. So extending it would be a challenge in general to have more houses down there.
All right.
So that's the point I wanted to make.
Right. But you, you appreciate the dilemma that we have, that with the common driveway, if that was to happen, there would be no improvements to the remainder of Black Horse Lane.
Other than they, we would be providing a turnaround for, for the fire trucks. They, they, they did take a look at it, and there is a sufficient area for them to actually, that would improve the situation, no?
There, there's other issues on Black Horse Lane as well. And, and then you might be right, Mr. Dinunno, that they can't be resolved. I mean, there's a choke point at one point, and that might not be resolvable, uh, even with a subdivision and even as conditioning it, that you'd like to address it. So, I mean, we, we are, we're in a, we're in a very much catch twenty-two. I don't, you know, as we keep discussing this, I'm fine with continuing everything, but, you know, I'm not sure that there is a magic solution at the end of the road, and we're going to be in the same place in, in a month's time, or a month's and a half's time, whenever we continue this too, so.
No, I, I agree, and, and just a quick little background, I'm a local builder. I build ninety-nine percent of my business in Cohasset. I intend to live on the premises, and I'm just looking at it from a practical standpoint, you know, as a resident, and, and somebody that'll be going up and down that road. I, I think a quaint, you know, fit in the neighborhood, three additional homes versus what potentially could be done there, and what might have to be done there to cover the, you know, delta and cost from subdivision to common driveway. It's just, I, I think it fits with the neighborhood and, and provides a turnaround for emergency vehicles.
I, I hear you, and it's, I mean, again, in, in my mind, this is a perfect example why we have to rethink how we have handled frontage for the last fifty years. The change was made in sixty-nine, the frontage in this area used to be over a hundred feet. Uh, that would create a, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five foot frontage in this neighborhood would create a completely different scenario that we'd be looking at as the alternative to the common driveway. And, you know, so that, you know, that, we, you know, we're going to be addressing those issues in the future. It's not going to affect this particular property at this point in time, so. Um, you know, we just have to deal with the cards we've been dealt with so far. So let me move this along, let me entertain the board. What do you want to do with the common driveway application? I find now if you want to continue it and allow the lawyers to, you know, in, in deference to the Watzke Law Firm, they haven't seen Carolyn's opinion. I don't think there's an objection at this point, since we've discussed it, of providing it to them. Carolyn, would you have an issue with that?
None.
No.
None whatsoever.
I mean, we're, we're, we're the client, and we can, we can say, okay, go ahead and do it. So, um, you know, I, I'll be glad to let the lawyers come up with creative ideas, but I, again, I'm not optimistic that we will come up with one in, in however many times. So if you want to continue it, give me a suggestion of a date. It would certainly be no earlier than our August meeting, probably our September seventh meeting.
Tom, you have somebody in the audience that'd like to speak again?
Phil, do you want to speak again?
No.
All right.
No one.
Lower your, lower your hand, you're confusing us. Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, all right, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion from the board, however you want to go. And this is be on the common driveway application, uh, to whether to continue it or to take action tonight on it. Anybody, anybody want to make a motion? Do you want me to make a motion?
I would submit a motion to dismiss the application for the common driveway.
I'd second that.
Take a roll call, vote, Clark?
Nay.
Yeah, I, I'm, Tom Galley, I'm going to lean nay at this point. I'll, I'll, I'll be creative, because I, I appreciate what the subdivision may wrought, so. Amy?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Deirdre?
Aye.
Chris?
Nay.
We're tied, uh, well, we're tied with an associate vote, so I guess the nays on the official votes uh, carry the day at the moment, so. I'll make a motion to continue the, the common driveway application to September seventh at sixteen.
Second.
Sorry, roll call, Clark?
Aye.
Tom, me, aye. Amy?
Nay.
Kevin?
Kevin, high, nay.
Deirdre?
Deirdre Hobson, nay.
Chris?
It's just to continue.
It's a moot point.
It's a moot point, our agenda is full, and we have a multitude of other issues that come through. You know, we gotta, we gotta value the time of everyone that's on the board.
We've got a five board in presence, we don't need.
All right, Chris, Chris, what do you say?
Please.
To clarify, the aye vote would be in favor of a continuance to give the lawyers an opportunity to hash out each other's opinions, correct?
Yeah, I, I, you know, and Kevin and Deirdre, again, my initial inclination is with you, but, you know, in fairness, I, I, you know, they're being dropped with Carolyn's opinion today. I don't like that when that happens to me, uh, in legal matters, so. I, I'm prepared to do that, but I don't, again, I agree with you that the outcome isn't going to change on September seventh, I don't think. So Chris, yes, that's where your face is, continuing it to the seventh, and we'll be at the same point we are tonight.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes carry on that. On the preliminary subdivision plan, I, what, what's the board's pleasure? We can, we can, again, we can continue that, we can approve it, we can deny it like we did the last one, you know.
Well, if it was a real subdivision, not just a zoning freeze goal, then we would, um, we would hire a peer reviewer to make sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, the procedural thing is that it gives them seven months from when this one was filed. So that'll bring us sometime into December or.
And, and the preliminary.
I'd rather, I'd rather, if we're eventually going in that direction, I'd rather move that process along. So I'm going to make a motion that, um, that we, as we did with, as we did the last time, is to deny the preliminary subdivision.
That way, we don't have to do any work on it, and then a definitive subdivision application would just come in um, within seven months, potentially.
Correct, un- unless we find the miracle cure to the common driveway. All right, um, anybody second that motion?
That was a denial of the subdivision.
Yep.
I'll second it. I, it's not of consequence.
Right. Roll call, Clark?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Kelly, and aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin?
And high, nay.
Deirdre?
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
Chris?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, um, Lauren, if you will, tomorrow distribute Carolyn's opinion to Attorney Watzke. Attorney Watzke and Attorney Murray, feel free to discuss this between yourselves. Just, you know, Carolyn will update us on what we need to be updated by, um, we'll, we'll see you on the seventh. And thank everybody in the audience, I see we had a lot of attendees. Thank you for, for being here and, and waiting this out. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Dinunno and Ms. Hudson as well, so. Um, do we have any other business to attend to, anybody?
Excuse me, Chair, I'm just confirming, I, I can, Matt and I can communicate with Carolyn directly to discuss.
Yeah, I, I, unless somebody on the board has an objection, I, I don't, I don't. Carolyn, do you have an objection to that?
I do not.
All right. Just keep us informed. All right, all right, thank you. All right, um, Clark, do you have something you want to address?
I, I could make a motion to adjourn.
All right, anybody second that?
Second.
All right, roll call, Clark?
Aye.
All right, myself, aye, Amy?
Glassmore, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin, high, nay.
Deirdre?
And Chris?
Chris Flex, aye.